All right, good to go, Mark.
Okay, good evening, everyone, welcome. I'm calling order the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission Public Hearing at 5:01 PM on Thursday, February 20th, 2025. This is the February 2025 hearing of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. My name is Mark Kiefer, I'm the Chair. And we are joined this evening by Commission Vice Chair Arian Allen. Believe Commissioner Finegold eventually, maybe not quite yet. Commissioners Jackson and Commissioner Steele. And I think Commissioner Finegold is on his way, I think. We'll certainly acknowledge him when he arrives.
Don't forget Arian, Mark.
Sorry.
Arian, Arian too, too. Yep.
Yes, oh, I thought I mentioned her, yes.
He mentioned me in the beginning.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Thank you, Arian. Let's see. So today the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the subsequent revisions through March 31st, 2023, we are conduct, sorry, through the subsequent amendments further suspending those provisions, we're conducting this meeting online, which is say over Zoom to your public access to deliberations of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Again, AKA Zoom, if you missed it, this hearing is being recorded, so all further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. And at this point, we'd like to acknowledge any media or elected officials present, I believe I saw Dan Murphy, yes, hello, Dan from Beacon Hill Times. Thanks for joining, Dan. Welcome. Any other media or elected officials, just scanning the list here quickly. If anyone joins, we'll certainly acknowledge them. And okay, members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment and applications and discussions. In order to do that, and we'll give you a heads up when it's time to do that, when we go through each application, we will pause for a moment and take a public comment during the adjudication of that application, we'll do it in turn, and each application will let you know when it's time to take public comment. And if you want to be heard on the record, you'll need to raise your hand quote unquote in the Zoom application, which according to these handy instructions. As you can see, Nick has on the screen, your controls at the bottom of the screen. There should be something that says raise hand or something in reactions that says raise hand, and that's how you do it. When you do that, Nick will call on you in turn and unmute you. Again, if you want to be heard on the record, you got to do that, you don't have to have your camera on. But you can't just put something in a chat or something like that, we'll need you to make, give testimony on the record, we'll give you the heads up when it's time to do that. Okay, I think that's it for the preamble, no violations this month, so we'll go directly to design review. The first item on the agenda is going to be 70 Mount Vernon Street. Is there a representative from 70 Mount Vernon present? I think it's Sheila, perhaps? Yes, I see, I think I see Sheila. Sheila, welcome, I think you are unmuted. Thanks for coming in, do you want to give us a quick summary of what you are proposing?
Sure, Nick, do you, do you have the, the the proposal that we, that we sent you, do you want to share that, or do you, I have it as well, if you want me to share?
It's up on the screen, just let me know if you want me to transition the slides.
Yeah, that would be great, if you could do that, I'd appreciate it. And thanks, everybody, for reviewing this with us. I believe most of you were involved with our project this past fall, we came before you last spring for 70 and 72 Mount Vernon, when we replaced our stairs with granite steps. And that project has finished and has actually gotten rave reviews from residents and other people as well, so we're very happy with how that turned out. While we were doing that project, we had residents in our building, particularly in 70, 70 Mount Vernon, which is it only has one step, 72 has, I believe, six steps up. But 70 did not have a handrail, it's never had a handrail. 72 has a handrail. We have a number of elderly people in our buildings, both those buildings, and people can actually exit, and some people actually do exit from 70, 72, out onto 70, because there are less stairs. It's just easier for them, they're able to do that within the building. But they are asked the board to put in a handrail at 70 just due to, you know, accessibility for them. And if you remember, and I mean, when Nick puts up the slides, I can show you a little bit better. We are on the slope of the hill, and this, there is the step on 70, there's, even though there's only one. It does graduate quite a bit from one end to the other of the step. And so that's why people have asked to have the handrail, so that they have the ability to use it to get up that step. So if Nick can put up the slides, I can show you, what our request is a very simple handrail, it will be made out of the exact same material and exact same style as what we have at 72, excuse me, at 72, and I have photos of those. We have
You should see it, Sheila, you don't see it?
I don't see it, no.
Sandy, do you see it?
No, I don't.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Wow, is anything showing?
Yes, I can see.
We're assessing existing conditions, Nick.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
That's funny.
Thank you, now I see it.
Okay.
I still don't see it, but.
Oh, wow.
Sheila, do you want to just share your screen, I can, I can give you the temporary ability to do that.
Is that easier? Yeah, yeah, maybe, well, let's do that, that way, I know what I'm talking.
Sure. Are you able to share your screen now?
Okay. Okay, so this is okay, so just to review, this is our proposal. Woven steel is who we are talking to, to do this for us, and they have given us an estimate. And they will, as I said, fabricate it exactly and install it as was done in 72. This is the existing condition of 70 Mount Vernon, so you can see our nice new granite step. Again, if you look on the left-hand side, it's, you know, I believe it's about eight inches there, but when you come over here, it really graduates up quite a bit. So this is where the difficulty lies with many of the residents, so that's why they're asking for the handrail. Okay, now to just show you what's happens at 72. It's a very simple handrail, it is attached, as you can see, to the building at the bottom, and then attached directly to the granite, and there is no attachment at the top. We would again, use the exact same style with everything that you see here is exactly what they would recreate at 70. And then here's a drawing of it, putting it in into the plant, or into the existing condition. The one difference from 70 is that it would only attach to the granite. And what we did at 72, because it was new granite and we had, you know, an existing iron rail, when they installed it into the new granite, we asked them to use stainless steel, which they did, into the granite, and then the iron rail sat on top of that, so that the granite won't degrade, or the, excuse me, the railing won't degrade over time. We would do the same thing here. We are not attaching it to the wall because woven steel has advised us not to, because of the brownstone condition. They're saying it would be much better to just have it attached, and because it's such a simple structurally, it doesn't need to be attached to the wall, so they're advising us not to do that. Here's another view from this direction to see what it would look like. I don't know if everybody can read the details, but.
So Sheila, this is quite helpful, and I think you've already probably answered what would have been a question with, or concern with respect to the mounting, staying off the groundstone, that's quite helpful. So it goes back, not all the way to the door, just about, looks like halfway?
No, it doesn't even, so it ends right here.
Oh, I see, that's just
That's just showing you the height, so this is yep, no, it's, it's quite small, 32 inches in total for the railing itself at the top.
Right, okay, and so just to confirm that the rightmost portion of the top of the rail there that shows like a return there, that, just to clarify for the viewers, it's not actually touching or connected to the brownstone back there, that's just a decorative.
Exactly, just like it does, yep, and it's the same as, as what we have on 72. If I go back to 72, you will see that's exactly what happens there, so it doesn't attach to the, the wall at all.
Got it, thank you, and then with respect to the, you mentioned the stainless steel, you're just saying there's like a stainless steel anchor that's in the
Yes.
Yeah, and then the, and the iron work is mounted in that, okay, so it doesn't actually affect how it looks.
Nope, it looks, that's, that's what they did right here. And it just helps so that the iron, because it's stainless steel, it doesn't degrade over time as the iron can, so longevity purposes, we did that, and we would, we would ask to do that again here.
You got it, okay, very good. Commissioners, any other clarifying questions as to what is proposed? Okay, hearing none. Oh, Sandy, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, it is the, the, looks like strings or something along the granite there on the base, that's just for drawing purposes?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
For drawing purposes.
Alright, thank you.
Is it possible to have someone work with the the condominium group who knows how to design a, an accessible handrail? Because the sketch shows that one's not aware, the person who drew the sketch isn't aware of the challenges for a person of an age going up a stair.
Well, I'm just going to tell you that, that Mo Finegold made the sketch. I might disagree, but anyway, these are done by Mo. Who obviously had to recuse himself from this discussion, but this is our
I asked that someone on staff sort of support, because I, the handrail doesn't start before, typically the handrail starts before I reach the first riser.
Right, but we were under the impression we can't do that. Okay, are you saying put this, this here out onto
I can't sketch over the handrail itself.
Just the top.
Yes, one, it would extend beyond the riser. And it would smoke. There would be, I'm kind of shocked that Mo drew this.
Can you, you might be able to sketch now, can you give it a try?
It's not showing up in my
I do, I do think it comes, and it's hard to see in his sketch, but I do think he intended that this does come out over the
I'm sorry, but it should come out further.
Yeah, I think this is from the way he drew it onto this photograph, it's a little hard to see that, but
It, it looks like a placeholder for a rail to be designed to be accessible rather than the actual design of the rail.
Yes.
So I'm comfortable with where it anchors, but the railing itself, one wants something to grab hold to before one goes up the ride, the first riser.
Right.
And likewise at the other end, so my concern is that if you looked at a handicapped rail of a, of a similar condition, you'd see that the, the grab bar is more extensive than shown in this design.
Extensive as far as diameter of itself?
Length, length, how much of it there is, is
Yeah, we can adjust the length as, as much as you want, and are you suggesting that we think about having this slope down, is that what you were
Yes, yeah, because
We can do, I mean, that's
So your other rail that's beyond, yeah, that unfortunately, the
Technically doesn't go beyond, it actually stops, it's very
I'm looking at the other, the other end seems appropriate. As a person of a certain age, the other end seems appropriate for me coming up or down the stairs. This end seems like a challenge, because I've got to raise myself up a thread before I can get to the rail.
And I think, well, you, I, I'd love to hear your input, because I think the reason we kept in, the way we did it over on 70 is to again, keep in, as much in line as what's happening here at 72, where it, that's what happens at 72, it, it ends right at the step.
But, yeah, I'm, I'm so I'm simply saying that it's, as a person of a certain age, this is a challenge. You're putting it in for people of my age, and I think that the rails should extend beyond the first riser.
And come and, and protrude out over into the sidewalk, is okay.
The rail, yeah, so the person can have something to grab hold to before they get on the first riser. Which is what the challenge is, they need something to help them lift themselves up, and this doesn't, this rail doesn't allow that.
I mean, I, for, I think for our purposes, that's totally works for us, I think we were concerned that we weren't really allowed to protrude out past the step, but if you're saying we can, then
I personally think for the rail to work for people of my age, it needs to extend beyond, regardless to what the architecture is doing. And so I, to my mind, I looked at the sketch as a placeholder, and Nick, can you tell me whether or not you would typically get involved?
What, what do you mean, Ralph?
In terms of what the handicapped accessible quality to the rail?
We, we can write our approval to make sure that we're adhering to these ADA requirements in terms of the dimensions and location of the rail, if that's what you're asking, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, and I think that would be welcome, especially because we have a priority to make, we have a you know, we want to make sure that what we're making these properties as accessible as possible while not harming the architecture, I think this would be a simple concession, yes.
Okay, so that's that would be the solution. The staff support you in
And just design, that would be great. Yep, appreciate that.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, candidly, Ralph, I think we you know, this is not strictly speaking a requirement, this installation under ADA. It's something that's the condominium has decided that it's in their interest to pursue. I candidly am a little nervous about stuff that starts to, you know, traverse the property line and so forth. You know, it probably wouldn't be the first railing, frankly, that at least hangs over a little bit. So I think maybe what I would be comfortable with in this instance is you know, particularly given that this is a sketch indeed, albeit by certainly a qualified architect that we all know and respect. For sure, I just want to make that clear, that, that, you know, the final design be submitted or approved by staff. And, and making a note with respect to Commissioner Jackson, Ralph, your, your comments with respect to the the end of the railing to ensure accessibility and so forth. Any other questions about what's proposed before we take public comment on this? Okay, why don't we go ahead and do that, if anyone wants to be heard on the record, now is the time for public comment on this application, if anyone we heard on the record, please raise your hand in the Zoom using the button at the bottom of your Zoom panel, and Nick will call on you and unmute you.
Okay, first up we have is Rochelle, Rochelle, go ahead.
Okay, Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose this application as submitted. The handrail is of an appropriate size, shape, material, and design satisfying guideline A3. It echoes the handrail at sister building at Sevigny to Mount Vernon, and attaches the new nonhistoric granite set and not to the historic groundstone well, well. Shop drawings would ensure satisfaction of guideline A6, which requires evidence, the work will be executed with the highest quality material and workmanship. End of comment.
Thank you, Rochelle, I'm not seeing any other public comment marks, we can close it for this application.
Okay, thank you, thanks Rochelle, okay, so I'm fine with this. And with, I think, again, in the abstract, Commissioner Jackson's additional guidance, I would like to see shop drawings rather than a sketch. And I think it sounds like there's an opportunity to take into account Commissioner Jackson's comments in finalizing the design. Does anyone have any views to the contrary? Okay, I will move that the application be approved with the following provisos, number one. That the rail be attached only to the granite and not to the brownstone. That a shop drawing detailing the specifications, dimensions, and, and other required details of the final design, taking into account Commissioner Jackson's comments about ensuring accessibility in the final design be submitted to and approved by staff in advance of installation.
Wasn't that supposed to be a slant involved as well?
Sorry, say again, Commissioner Allen?
Wasn't, wasn't there supposed to be a slant involved as well?
Sorry, I'm, I'm not hearing the key word, a what involved as well?
Slant.
Oh, yeah, that, that yes, I mean, that, that's what I meant when I said taking into account, they'll, they'll Mo evidently will make a formal shop drawing, and taking into account those considerations and submit it to Nick and he'll approve it.
Alright, then I second the motion.
Great, thank you, so we will vote, Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Finegold, I think is not yet here and would be refused in any event, Commissioner Jackson?
Approved.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele?
Yes, aye.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in, Sheila, you'll get a, a letter from Nick summarizing our determination. And if you have any questions, please just follow up with Nick directly, thanks.
Will do, thanks, everybody, appreciate the input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
74 Joy Street, is there a representative from 74 Joy Street here, which I think is going to be Eric Sights, perhaps?
Solomon here, where'd he go?
There he is, there's Eric.
Eric, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah. How's it going, and I think Deb Sullivan was going to join, but she was going to be a little late, so
We're right here, yeah.
I'm here.
Oh, hey, Deb, how are you?
Welcome, hi Eric, thanks for coming in, and Deb, do you want to just give us a quick summary of what you are proposing?
Yeah, so over at 74 Joy Street right now, it's owned by the Hill House, right now, we're tenants in there. I'm on the board at Beacon Hill Nursery School, Deb's the director there. And then the civic association's on the first floor as well, in there. And we've had a couple incidents recently with homelessness, people sleeping on the steps, interactions coming up to the door. So in terms of talking to the Hill House and talking with Eve Waterfall and Patricia Tully, we were talking about adding cameras for, that everyone could see, to help preemptively, you know, see where people are. So we met with the security company and came up with a certain amount of locations, Nick actually came out and helped us try to find better locations for those that achieve the same goals. So instead of adding, I think it was originally six or seven cameras, we're down to five. Two of which are shown right here at this location. And the reason there's two there is, we would like to try to get, there's a gate to the right where people enter. And we would try to get that location as well as the, to the left is the entrance to the gym where the Hill House has after-school programs there.
And that's a, that's a, like a path that goes up the side, just to the left of that fence, right?
Correct, yeah. And these cameras, we, I, we have the specs, but the cameras are the round eyeball, they're about three inches wide, three inches in circumference. And we're talking to the installer, the, the frame of them, the camera itself will be black, which is like the lens. But talking to the installer, there's a frame that mounts to the wall, we would match that to the color of the inside portico there, which is like a gray in there.
And those would be up inside the vestibule, well, not inside the door, but inside the
Correct, yeah, there's a a little lip there. But yeah, they'd be to the left and to the right.
Very good, right, thank you. Okay, so there's two there, there's two on the side, those
Yeah, so the other Yeah, the other one is pretty far back, camera three is actually going to be right next to the door. So it's very, it would be about maybe four feet tall. And very minimal, I don't, I don't know if you'd even see it from the street right now. But it is correct, right there, yeah.
Okay, so that's zoomed in, and again, just to orient us here, there's a gate in the fence, right to the, kind of where the lamp is right there, and then there's some steps down, and then a path that goes out back to that door, and it's, it's be mounted to the, just next to that door, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and then, then the other one, while we're down there, would be above that gray, grayish-blue door, window, whatever it is, behind, right?
Yeah, and it would be mounted in the top left corner, not to the brick, but underneath the overhang, so to hide it as much as we, we can.
And those are black, is that right?
Those would be black, yeah.
Yeah, and the one by the, the door, the closer door that we're looking at, that's open right now, is that like in, in an intercom panel or something, or is that just
So, right now, there's like a doorbell there, like a, a little one that's almost like sticked on, it's going to be about the same, it would be surface mounted, it comes out about an inch, but it's not LED lit, it's just a button.
And, and that's got the camera in it?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, got it, okay. Like one of those Ring doorbell kind of thing?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So that's four of them.
Yeah, and then the The fifth one would be above the gym door, right there. All the way back about, I'd say that's about 50 yards. Back there, it'd be right over the door there, a little bit to the left, so we could get down the alley. There's a camera, I mean, on a camera, there's a light, a surface mounted light right there, right now.
Okay, can you zoom that in, Nick, if possible?
Sorry, Mark, I'm zooming in, in
I was gonna say, you were doing really well with the other ones.
Okay, so that's, again, you can see this is pretty far back. And, and again, obviously, our purview is, you can see from the public way, so we're concerned about what you can see from the street. That, even though that may look like some of the other small public ways in, in, in Beacon Hill, that's not one of them. So it's, it's going to replace that light or be next to it?
It would be to the left of it, I asked if there was a camera light combo, but they didn't have one.
Okay, and that one is black as well?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that's the five, two, just to recap quickly, two Okay, so that's the five, two, just to recap quickly, two up in, under the, in the sort of archway in the front entrance. Uh, two on the side, um, back, uh, toward the rear of the building, one, uh, at, uh. You know, four feet high next to the door, the other in the corner. And then the fifth one that we just saw way back, uh, on the left side of the building, above that other door, right, the gym door, right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and then one more time, they're how big? About three, three inches?
Uh, they're about three inches. They're typical, um, they are.
There we go. Thank you, Nick.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, very good. Uh, Commissioners, any questions, clarifying questions? Thank you. That's very helpful, Eric, uh, about what's proposed? So then, let me go back to the other view, so I can see.
Oh, sorry, Mark.
Uh. Any clarifying, and that's it. There's the five cameras, Eric?
Yeah, there is one, Nick. You saw there was a existing, um, uh. Door directory that had buzzers in there. There's actually a camera in there now, um. Uh, that, um, will. Talking to, it's actually on the side door that goes directly to the civic association. Um, they're gonna try to get that camera going, but it's not a, it's not a new, um, directory or anything. It's. It's, it's there and the camera's not working, so they're gonna replace that camera part of it. But that's it.
Okay, uh, but as far as this application is concerned, it's just these five.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, um, I'm not seeing any hands. So why don't we take public comment on this? Again, if you want to be heard on the record, raise your hand in the Zoom, using the button at the bottom of your Zoom panel, and Nick will. Uh, acknowledge you and unmute you.
Okay, uh, first up we have is Rochelle with Civic Association. Rochelle, go ahead.
Okay, Beacon Hill Civic Association. Also, we didn't have this information at our meeting, so. We just had a picture of the building and a picture of the camera. Um, so our comment is, we find this application incomplete, as guideline A nine requires. Equipment installations not be visible from a public way, and the application does not detail. Specific locations. Additionally, we would suggest black cameras would be less visually intrusive than the white cameras noted. End of comment.
Thanks, Rochelle. Uh, sorry, I didn't get those over to you, Rochelle. I apologize. Um. Okay, I'm not seeing any other public comment marks, so we can close it for this application.
Okay, very good. Public comment is closed. Thank you, Rochelle. So obviously, uh, we've been a little bit overtaken by events here, Rochelle, in the sense that. The application has been revised with Nick's, uh, guidance, I think quite helpfully. Uh, we've got black cameras instead of white ones, and fewer cameras, and tucked up the ones in the door. The other ones, I think, are quite distant from the public way. Uh, and, uh, in my observation, estimation. Uh, certainly no more visible than any other such cameras that we've allowed in the past. Um, it's a nursery school. Uh, it's a community center, uh, it's the neighborhood association's office, Hill House, which manages kids' programs and so forth. Um, I think the, uh, you know, clearly, there's a need for, uh, these kind of security apparatuses and. You know, this is also, I think, given the distance of these things from the public way, um. They strike me as no more, um. Having no more visual impact than the Ring doorbells and other small cameras that we, uh, are installing more commonly now, right at, uh, you know. Very close, right on the public way. Um, so I'm okay with this. Um, Nick, did you have any further guidance? I wanna make sure I'm not forgetting something that you had also suggested. Uh, so you've obviously done a lot of work on this already?
Yep, so just making sure that any conduits are, are not visible from areas within our purview. Uh, and that they have to be integrated into the facade, that the facades are repaired, and that any of the cameras are mounted through. Uh, when they are mounted on masonry facades, that they're mounted through the, um, uh, the joints rather than the brick itself.
Great, thank you. I'm glad I asked, because clearly I had forgotten. Uh, so Eric, uh, are these all gonna be wired directly through? With no, uh, con- surface conduit?
Yep. There should be no, everything will be, uh, surface-mounted, no, no conduit.
Okay, and, uh, y- you just heard Nick there. I think we're always concerned about when we're installing stuff on masonry. To just, if we're gonna drill holes, and I understand you gotta drill holes to mount something like this, that you drill it through the mortar and not the masonry itself. Um, that way it's utterly reversible. Um, so we'll, we'll have a proviso on that. Um, anyone, uh, so, uh, so no conduit. Um, and we'll mount it, uh, through the, um. Uh, mortar, not the brick. Um. Okay, uh, any other? Thoughts on this? Any concerns about what, what is proposed? Okay, I, in that case, I will move that the application be approved as submitted with the proviso. Um, that, uh, the. Cameras be mounted, uh, without, um, a surface conduit that's visible. And that, uh, the, any, any, uh, holes through the, uh. Walls that are required for the mounting of the camera be made through mortar rather than brick in the instances where the cameras are mounted on brick. And that's it.
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Allen. Uh, we will vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Has Commissioner Feingold joined us yet? I don't see him. Uh, I don't think so. Commissioner Jackson.
Uh, uh, yeah, yes.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele.
Yeah.
Okay, the application is approved. Thank you very much, Eric. You'll get a letter from Nick, uh, just summarizing our determination. If you have any questions, it should be straightforward, but if you have any questions, please just follow up with Nick directly. Thanks.
Alright, thank you, and thank you again to Nick for doing the extra effort of coming out and taking a look, so I appreciate it, uh. And the extra stuff, but thank you all.
And Deb, thank you too for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is. I believe it is fifty-three Charles Street. Is that Rachel? I think I saw Rachel. Um. Yes, there, there is Rachel, Nick, uh, Ra- Rachel Wentworth.
So you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, Rachel. How's it going?
Thanks for coming in. Um, welcome. You wanna just give us a quick, uh, summary of what you are proposing?
Sure, I'm representing, um, Forty Winks. We're a, um, bra shop. We've been in Harvard Square. For fifteen years. We're opening our second location at fifty-three J, or at fifty-three Charles. I'm really excited to be here. Um, we are just sort of seeking approval for some, uh, installation of a blade sign, um. A decals on our windows and, um, repainting the facade, which is. Chipping and peeling pretty badly right now. We're gonna use the same. Color that's currently on the building, Benjamin Moore Black. Um, the, uh, sign will be installed. Where the other sign was installed, um, on the brick facade above. And then vinyl decals on the windows, and then we're gonna have a hand-painted. All our welcome sign, which is similar to the one we have in Harvard Square, painted on the inside of the glass. Um, and. That's sort of, that's the scope of our wor- of the work, um.
Okay, uh, the sign, so it's, it's, um, just so, so we understand.
Yeah.
We've got a mock-up of this, the, the sign you're referring to that's on the. That, can we go back to that, the, the, the projecting sign? Okay, so that is, um, you're, you're the only store in this, in this building, right?
Yes.
And there's, you said there was a sign there, there's, is there a bracket still, or are you proposing a new bracket?
New brackets. And our sign guide, Philip, is on this call, um, so if you have specific questions. Yes.
Okay, I feel, um, and sorry, I'm gonna just quickly, twenty-five, five. Okay, um, that seems to be in order size-wise, uh, where. It, was there a bracket? I'm, forgive me, I, uh, I'm not remembering what was in this space before exactly, so I'm not remembering the old sign. But you're saying there was a sign like this before?
Um, it wasn't hanging when we signed the lease. Um, there is definitely signs of a sign. There were. Above the black sort of facade where it ends.
Right. Uh, yeah, and just to be clear, you, you, you. You're certainly entitled to a sign on this business. We just, I'm just trying to establish if you are putting it where it was before, or if you're gonna mount it. In a different place, and if it's in a different place, exactly where is it gonna go?
Um, it looks like what it was before was, um, actually just on the building. Um, or actually, no, there was sort of nothing there, but s- do you see sort of the? If we could like zoom in at all, sort of above the black, uh, a little bit?
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, see, right there. That's where we're proposing that we would reinstall a sign.
Right, okay. Um, are there, okay, so that, as you may have just heard from the prior application, we're always, uh. Uh, concerned about making new penetrations into the masonry, so we wanna make sure it's mounted in the mortar. Uh, the city sign code also requires, um, that signs, these, these projecting signs not be above the second floor sill. So, uh, if we can just get in the details for just a little bit here, the, I see it's got a mounting bracket, and the sort of, the arm comes out from it. Can you, okay, so, um. Well, maybe it's as simple as just.
Pretty low, yeah. I think it would be underneath those cells.
Yeah, I think, uh, maybe we can just specify that. It looks like if it was approximately where it was before, it'd be fine. Um, so it projects out over, and then what's the sign made out of?
It's wood.
Okay, are the letters, are they applied or raised or incised or something? I can't quite tell from the.
Through carved letters with black letter fill, um. Yes, Philip, maybe you wanna weigh in on that?
Yeah, well, we were, I, I think we landed on, on dimensional. You know, uh, protruding letters, but we can easily go to the carved letters, um.
Oh, no, you, you can do the, uh, I just wanna clarify. Oh, I see, yeah, you've got a little shadow on there, I see, so they are, and what are the letters? And Philip, in your design, what are the letters made out of?
Um, I was going to use, um, a, a protocol HDU, uh, sign foam, which is a high-density urethane. When it's painted, it's, it's pretty much, um, uh, indistinguishable from any other. Product, but that's what I was gonna use. Um, the, the sign itself would be made out of cedar. Um, I just like to use that for the letters, because I just think it looks best and has a good look and long-staying power.
Right, uh, well, we do, uh, generally require natural materials for the signs. This has come up even just a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
It's not uncommon for HDU to be pro- proposed, but, uh, we would prefer that to be wood.
Yeah, that's fine. We can do that.
And, uh, you know, uh, for what it's worth, there are, um. Uh, I dare say it is not uncommon for wood signs to outlast the businesses on Charles Street, uh, if they're well-made, and I suspect this one will be quite well-made.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and I can use, uh, I can absolutely make those out of wood.
Great, um, so, uh, and then. Just trying to, I'm sorry, I can't quite read this, cause the type is a little small, but the size of the sign is about twenty-five square, something like that, twenty-six?
I think, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh, and the, the, uh. And so that it's just wood and it's painted, and it's a, it's a white background with black letters, basically, and a, and a white, uh, black frame?
Yep.
Great, okay, so, okay, so that's the projecting sign, but then you're also proposing signage on the windows? Uh, there's a little mock-up, good, okay, so, so yeah, you can see where you've got it there in this mock-up, that's below the second floor sill, that's fine.
Okay, great.
Uh, and when I say the second floor sill, I'm talking about the, of course, just to be very clear, the bottoms of those windows.
Those windows, yes.
The sill being that piece of, of, uh, stone at the bottom. Okay, so there's, there's a decal on the front window.
Yes, and on the two sides, um, and then just sort of a little bit about, you know, our, the sign. Or the sizes we offer, the fact that we welcome everyone, and sort of what we offer in terms of bra fittings. Um, just in small lettering, kind of underneath that, um, simple cream decals. Um, we have used Philip for this in the past, and we have them in our Harvard Square shop. Um, they're pretty straightforward, but any questions you have, I'm happy to, to answer that.
Okay, so. So there's, it says Forty Winks on the front window, and then also on the side. By the door?
Yes.
And then there's some decals on the door?
Our hours, yeah, so the hours will be listed to, right to the right, and then Forty Winks in the middle pane there on the, on the door.
Okay, it looks like there's some lettering at the bottom of the windows as well?
Yeah, so it basically says, um, it says the sizes that we offer, um, that we offer bra fittings. That all are welcome, that we offer lingerie, and it sort of continues that it's, it's the same. Uh, words, yes. The sizes, the bra fittings, all are welcome, um, and then. Bra fittings and all are welcome on the other side as well. So it's the same thing, sort of repeating in a pattern that we worked out.
Okay. Uh, let's see, so. And that's it, okay, so, uh, so not, there's no, uh, 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 flat sign above. The window, just the projecting sign.
Just the projecting sign, yep.
Okay, uh, Commissioners, any other clarifying questions with respect to what is proposed? For the signage? Either in what it is, where it goes, what it's made out of, anything like that, um. Not seeing any. We can come back, uh, so let's go to public comment, if you wanna be heard on the record, make public comment. Um. Please raise your hand in the Zoom. Nick will call on you.
Okay, um, let's see, Rochelle, you are up first.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose this application as proposed. With the exception of the multiple store name graphics in the windows. We suggest a single graphic would satisfy guideline I nine, which states graphics shall be limited to a single sign and/or display box per business. Except for one additional projecting sign per building. This or front repainting in kind satisfies guideline G one. As black is historically appropriate. The materiality and workmanship of this new blade sign satisfies guideline I six. And the new metal bracket is of a appropriate design satisfying guideline A three. We, we request the bracket be installed into mortar joints if possible. End of comment.
Hey, um, not seeing any other public comment marks, so we can turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Rochelle. Um. So yeah, I, in, in terms of our guidelines with respect to signage, I mean, you heard Rochelle mention them. Uh, a little bit in passing there, um, we kind of have sort of general and specific. Uh, guidance with respect to these things, and the specific I already mentioned, I think, is that, you know, tip, and, and Rochelle just mentioned this. Typically, you're, you're permitted, uh, one, uh, flat sign, uh, per business, and then one additional projecting sign. Per building, as it turns out, there's, um, you're the only business in this building, so again, you're certainly entitled to that. Um, I think the. Sign, at least at the bottom of the window in the front, is in a sense taking the place of. What would be a belt sign above, which you're, you're not asking for. Um, so I think I'm fine with that, uh, but we also have a, a general guideline that talks about the, apart from those specific. Uh, uh, details, that the, the placement of the, the, the signage, the size, the scale. Um, and the number of signs, you know, be appropriate for the building, proportional and so forth, and I think this is a bit much in, uh. In my view, um, the, uh. You, you've got, again, the, the, the signage on all three panels, I think that's what Rochelle was referring to, that it's on all three sides. Uh, so I think I would prefer to see just the, the one in the front. Uh, and then with respect to this, the, the additional decals underneath, can we just zoom in on that? And by the way, just to clarify. Uh, I, I think I'm seeing something different than what was in the application. Um, there was, I think in the application, something else that showed, I mean, I think Nick scrolled that, yeah, that, that right there. So it. So, so is, is, has this been sort of superseded by the sketch you just showed?
This is in addition to the sketch. This would be in there. And then would have the other things sort of around there as well. This is our sign that we also have in Harvard Square that. Really states the values of our business in terms of whom we welcome into it. So this will be hand-painted by someone else who's in here, Kenji.
Okay, so, so just to be clear. What you're proposing is the Forty Wink signs on all three of the windows in the bay, the additional, uh. Information below each of those on the window, and then this additional. information below each of those on the window, and then this additional, looks like orangish colored the graphics on the window above and then the door. Yeah, I think, I I think to in my view, that's that's kind of too much. Now, to be clear, you know, this is, the other issue here is that, you know, we 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 typically want to restrict the signage to just identifying information about what the business is, the name of the business. We certainly allow logos and things like that. But we we try to limit the amount of additional information, whether it be hours or anything like that. I will say, just candidly, something like this, you've got a big storefront that's all glass. And, you know, you're free to decorate that storefront inside the building as you see fit, and so, you know, you're certainly within, it's it's out of our jurisdiction if you wanted to put this on something that just sits inside. Imagine, you know, a nice picture frame or something that sits on an easel or something, you know, inside the window. If if that's important to you, just as you would, display your merchandise and things like that. So, you know, there are alternative ways I think you could express this that don't run up against our 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 guidelines for the historic district, if you follow me.
I do.
Commissioners, any other thoughts?
You actually covered everything that I was concerned about, so.
And not to put words in your mouth, Arian, but does that mean you would be more comfortable reducing the amount of actual signage sort of along the lines that I suggested?
Definitely, I mean. We we definitely want to, I mean, I love the idea of the store, that's great, but just we want to keep the signage.
Yes.
So, what's it named, but yes.
Okay. I hear that.
Commissioner Steele, yes, please go ahead.
Are we, are we eliminating the run of the sizes and everything on the bottom of the windows, or is that staying?
Well, I I think I would be more comfortable if we did that. Again, it's a big window. They they have, I think, the ability to convey that information in means other than window signage, if you will, without.
Well, I'm fine with that. I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Just so, just so I'm clear, the one forty wings in the be in the front is the only thing that we, that you would prefer that we use, just the one there, nothing, no other decals.
I think I'm okay with the hours on the door. That's that's the kind of information that if we were to permit a little additional information on the projecting sign, for example, which is, at present, is very simple, you just have the name. So we we would permit a logo mark. There are other signs you'll see on Charles Street that let's say the Sevens Pub down the street, for example, below the Sevens, it says like John Kylie proprietor or something like that. Right, so that's the kind of stuff that I think we would normally permit as an addendum to the identification of the business. So I think in that context, particularly since you're not you know, looking for a belt sign above. I personally, I think I'd be okay with the the hours on the door. It's tastefully done. It's not huge. Again, it's proportional.
Rachel, one doesn't typically get statements of equity along Charles Street. And so the idea of creating a second layer inside that conveys those notions, it sounds like a reasonable strategy to take.
Agreed, thank you, yes.
Okay, anyone else? Sandy, your hand is still up. Sorry, okay, I I will move that the application be approved with the following provisos. That, number one, the sign bracket be installed, for the projecting sign be installed below the second floor sill. That it be installed in a manner that any penetrations to the masonry be made only in the mortar and not in the brick. And that the signage in the windows be limited to the single forty wings sign on the front facing window and the information about hours on the window in the door.
I second that.
Okay, we will vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
And one more time, Commissioner Feingold, I think he's not here, Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much to you both, to Rachel and Philip. Appreciate you coming in and you'll get a letter from Nick summarizing our determination. If you have any questions, please just follow up with Nick directly.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you.
Levin Irving Street. Which I believe is Christine Connolly.
Oh, good, okay.
Oh, there you are. Hi, Christine, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me, Commissioners. I am presenting tonight a project that involves replacing the existing front door. It's beyond repair due to just excessive wear and multiple past repairs. And I I can go into more detail about what's on the pictures there, as well as some things that you probably can't know with just pictures. But I gave the unconventional picked, took the picture of the door open to try to just be able to show some of the, some of the features about the door, and then there's another picture from the inside too, because you're able to see again, some of the the wear on the door that way too. But the current door, it it has these large gaps between the door and the trim, so that's making it difficult to maintain proper insulation and warmth inside the unit. In fact, this week, with the weather and temperature that's there, it's too cold for me to stay there. It doesn't matter how much I turn up the heat, I can't get it over sixty degrees. So that is why this was like kind of an urgent thing, even though I knew this was a long time coming. Since I've lived in the the unit, it kind of was a heads up that the door probably was going to need to be replaced at some point. I did have it. The trim from the inside, try to, you know, close the gaps as best I could over the years, but we're at the place now, it's just beyond it. The different vendors I've had look at it have just all said that they're not willing to repair. It would have to be replaced. Another feature too, that's not obvious in the pictures, is just the door's condition has compromised, like my ability to securely like close and lock the door. I have to do a very special lift and push that only I know how to do to get it to turn into the lock the way it needs to, so it can stay securely and any day now, I I think it's just gonna maybe not work that way.
And just to be clear, I started to interrupt, but so this doorway, actually, it's shown pretty nicely in this in this image is the lower level, right? So there's there's another door on this building that's much bigger and and kind of double door, and so forth. This is, this is a sort of secondary entrance, correct?
Um, no, well, yeah, and I should have clarified this at the beginning. So this is actually a garden unit, basement unit, whatever the 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 term would be of this building. So the main, the to the right, those two black doors that open, those enter into the building for the other eight units in the building. And then this door is how you get into the basement unit, my unit.
Okay, very good. And and so you're just replacing the door, the gate is going to stay there, so forth? Okay, what about the stuff on the door?
Stuff.
Hardware and all that?
Oh, yeah, I know, when I first sent the application in, I told Nick I hadn't put much thought into that, so I did find just brass, like lock, so it looks very similar physically. I think it's in my application. But just like.
Oh, right, it is.
And I don't intend on putting even that locker or in the mailbox, we're in the process of trying to get the mail to have a place in the other unit, so that I wouldn't have to dig into the a new door.
Okay, so no mailbox is what you're saying?
Yeah, that's, that's the.
Okay. Very good, okay. So this is brass hardware, similar to what's there, no mailbox, and the door is this similar design, but it's just two panels instead of three, is that right? Can you show us the?
And I, yeah, sure, if Nick can do that. I did want it the same. I've I've actually had a hard time trying to get vendors to be able to do this. I did send out an email, I'm just waiting her back. Where I just want to make sure they're clear that preferred would be to have the the third. I had made that clear before, but this is, I don't know if this is like all that they can do for some reason, or but yeah, I I'm just trying to get something that's similar, so.
I I do have a question. You said vendors, so. I first, Nick, maybe you can tell me, is this door original to the building?
Probably not, to be honest with you. I don't see anything special about this door. It's probably, I would, if I were to guess, I would say maybe nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies.
All right, all right, a little history, but not overly long. All right. So the idea of repairing is just an absolute no, but you're gonna get something that's that's inclined, so is it a wood door?
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry. Some of this stuff is so in my head that, so it, the proposed replacement is a custom wood door designed to match this historic character. It's a seven two eight two traditional fur door with the two panel design. It has a volo sticking and five and a half inch styles. The door will fit the original dimensions, and it's actually an odd dimension. It's it's thirty six and a half by eighty six and a half. And that I'll have like, you know, weather stripping and stuff that won't be visible and no structural modifications.
Right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? That's quite helpful. That's a good question. And yeah, by the way, Arian, I was asking about, I just wanted to clarify that this is the this sort of garden level entrance, so it's not the primary door of the building and where we might be even more, you know, concerned about the historicity of it and so forth. It was, I'm sure I likewise don't think this is at all original, in any case, probably designed to be simpler in the first instance rather than compared to the main entry door. Any other questions from the commission before we take public comment? And that's it, it's just the door, right, Christine?
Yeah, just the door and then and then the hardware.
Right, right. Okay, let's go to public comment. If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand in your Zoom and Nick will unmute you.
Okay, first up we have is Rochelle with the Civic Association. Rochelle, go ahead.
Yeah, Beacon Hill Civic Association, we oppose this application as it does not demonstrate this potentially historic three panel door is beyond repair as required under guideline E one and does not specify hardware to be installed for guideline E five. If the door is either nonhistoric or beyond repair, we suggest it be replaced either in kind or consistent with the front doors. The nineteen oh five original storefront was converted in nineteen thirty one, and we are unsure as to what front door was replaced in nineteen eighty two. End of comment.
Okay, thanks Rochelle. I'm not seeing any other public comment marks. We can close it for this application.
Okay, and let's see, one last question. I think we've answered the issue with respect to the hardware, because we we now do see that. So Christine, is the color going to stay the same, or are you going to paint it a different color?
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you mentioned that. That was another thing, again, was trying to get this in quickly so that I can get moving on being billed with the lead time. I, the, when I got the place, it like underneath, I can see that it was originally red, so there was a historic red that I was gonna ask to see if I should bring that up now of that being approved, or if you guys have some other guidance on that.
Is that, is that in the application?
No, no, sorry, it occurred to me later that, like, we have the hardware, we have the door, obviously has to be painted something, so.
Well, let's see, so I I think, yeah, if it's not in the application, that means it hasn't been formally noticed. Unfortunately, we do have a notice requirement for these things.
If we're approving the door, I think it it it's safe to assume that we're we're going to allow it to be painted. So if we want to give her guidance on the paint color, we could say in kind. If we wanted to, if we wanted to be that stickler and she could, she could apply for a different color.
I was just gonna suggest that, yeah, certainly, Christine, yeah, I think, to be clear, as Nick was saying. I think I'm fine with if you just want to repaint it the same color. We still would want to get a paint chip and have Nick approve that.
Oh, sure.
But if you did, but you could come back. If you do some research or just change your mind, or decide you wanted a different color and apply to change the color.
Yeah, sure, no, I'll work with Nick for any of that too, because I did want to get, again, when it came up later about the color, like, I want to get it painted in the, there's historical paint, like, and stuff too. So I'll work with Nick on that detail for sure.
Okay. Nick, and is that is probably as far as we want to go with that? I mean, I suppose. Well, no, we we normally want to want to look at a a paint color for a door, right? So, yeah, okay, so I think, you know, we we can we can probably approve repainting in kind with a with a assuming with a proviso that says you got to supply the paint chip that shows that it's the same color to Nick before you do it. And then you, but you're always free to come back if you want to change the color later. Okay, there was a concern raised about the door, switching it from the three panel to the two panel. I think I've already weighed in on that, that I I don't see this as particularly historic or or significant. It's the secondary entrance to the building. So I think it it ought to be modest in character in any in any case, what's proposed is wood. It's otherwise similar, not inconsistent, I think, in general with the treatment of these kinds of entrances on this part of the hill, but does anyone else have a a view to the contrary about that? Okay, hearing none. Anything else? Anyone want to make a motion?
Mark, what about the door knocker?
Oh, yeah, tell us what about Christine, what you plan to do with that again?
I don't plan to have one.
Do you, do you, is there, Nick, is there something special about that?
It it looks like a like a nineteen fifties door knocker, but, you know, in in previous applications, specifically, there's a couple of applications the north slope, like specifically Anderson Street, where the Civic Association had kind of thought like the vintagey mid-century alterations was kind of part of the history there, so I just wanted to kind of reflect. Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it's from my parents' house from before, like, so, sorry. I thought, I thought it was, yeah, I was like gonna assure you, don't worry, I don't need it. I just needed something at some point, so, sorry.
Okay.
And just to be clear, your parent, your parents' house was not on the north slope of Beacon Hill? Okay, well, I'm glad we asked. Thank you, Nick, for bringing that up. That was right. That was the one lingering concern. Okay, so in that case, in particular, I'm okay with removing the door knocker or not having it. Okay, does anyone want to make a motion? Okay, fine, I'll I'll move that the application be approved as submitted with proviso that the door if the new door be repainted in kind with the paint chip demonstrating the matching color to be submitted and approved by staff in advance of any painting. Unless, and but the applicant is free to submit another application to to change the color at a later date. That goes without saying, I think. Do I hear a second.
I second.
Okay, we will vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, Christine, for coming in. Appreciate it. And you'll get a letter from Nick summarizing our determination. If you have any questions, feel free to follow up with him directly.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is ninety Chestnut Street. I think I saw a guy grassy there. There he is, yes.
Yes, how are you?
Good evening, Guy, welcome. Thanks for coming in. Is it just you, or do you have anyone else with you tonight?
Just me on this one.
Okay, I know this is kind of a a big one and a kind of a complicated one. Do you want to just, and it's, and there's been some updates, so you want to just bring us up to speed on where we are with a quick summary?
Sure, man, it's actually, I think, pretty straightforward. This one should be, should be pretty simple. The, at the the last hearing, we presented a bunch of stuff. Some of it had been approved administratively. And we were denied without prejudice on the on the replacement of rear windows. And and we were denied without prejudice on the location of the extended roof deck. Um, and and we were denied without prejudice on the location of the extended roof deck. Um, can I share my screen?
Uh, absolutely, Guy. Let me just give you privileges.
Okay.
Go for it.
Alright, so you should be able to see my messy desktop. So. The um. The, the, this is a house that um. Um, has visibility from Chestnut Street and I think everything on Chestnut Street has been administratively approved that we had presented. With the exception of expanding the roof deck, the existing roof deck. Um, and then we had proposed replacement of these windows in the rear. That are just sort of obliquely or partially vi- visible from River Street, looking through some gardens and over some walls and stuff. Um, and and um. Um, you folks asked us to either get a um, somebody to to tell us that the the windows were useless and impossible to restore. And they're not. They're, and I think I had said that, that that they're in decent shape. They're just poor windows and leaky and single glazed. Um, and and the owner really wanted to replace them. So he's uh understands that and and thi- this application now shows all those rear windows. As being restored and the storm windows being removed and we're gonna install interior storms. Um, so I think that's seems simple enough. Um, and all these plans just do is they show the location. Some of the windows on the back are not visible from the public way. Some are. We're we're gonna remove all of the storm windows if if it's approved and then restore all of the existing. Uh, sash and frames that are there and brick molds and all that stuff. Um, the other part of this was the roof deck and this is the um. Um, it's a little complicated, but at the end of the day, I think it's fairly simple. The, this is the existing condition. Uh, on the roof, the um, there's a, there's a fairly expensive, extensive deck up here currently and and. Planters around it all. Um. M- most of the stuff in the middle is not visible. The, there's some visibility from River Street here. Um, nothing's changing back there, so that's all to remain. The only thing that is visible. Is where we've, we've removed uh HVAC equipment from here and removing a headhouse here. And we were hoping to expand the roof deck into that area. And um. The, it turned out that the, we had photographed it and and designed it and mocked it up in the. Where and and the, in the warm weather when leaves were on the trees and when the leaves fell off, it's became much more visible than we anticipated. So the mockup has been um rebuilt in a new location and this is the expanded roof deck. So it's, it's significantly pushed back from where it was before. This section of the roof deck is existing. Um, so we're not touching that. And that is partially visible when you get to the corner of River Street. Um, you don't see it from directly across the street on Chestnut, but you do see it through the trees. Um, um, from River Street. Um, this section we've mocked up and we didn't think it was visible, but. Um, um, Nick has found a. A sliver of it that actually you can see. Um, and it's, it's pretty smi- it's pretty minor, um, but I think he's got some photos that are better than mine or show that. Tiny bit of of the uh, the of the handrail. It's been mocked up in two by fours. So it's obviously, it's gonna be a black iron, you know, handrail, so it'll be less visible than a two by four. Um, but it is marginally visible. And I think what you you see a little bit of this edge of it right here. Um, when you get to that far side corner of River Street through the trees. Um. Um, other than that, just the elevations are here and the sections and everything else, but but that's, that's really all there is to this. Um, these are the mockups. We've moved the uh mechanical equipment so that you can't see it. We've mocked it up and. Of course, you can't see it. It's too far away. Um, this is the side and there's a skylight that we proposed and it's not visible. Um, I think Nick has seen the the mockups. But we're just.
I'm, I'm sorry, Guy. Could we go back to that one for just a second? I I just want to make sure I understand what's proposed. So the forward section of this, that's most distant in the image, that's against the chimney. Uh, that piece of two by fours right there, that's, that's gonna be the replacement or relocated headhouse, is that correct?
Well, that's a good question, because that's, that was gonna be a fence and that's gone. So I'm, it may just be that they didn't take that piece down.
Oh, because that, you you can see that from.
Yeah, we were gonna have an enclosure here for a, for an outside shower and that's been removed from the application. Um, this is the application now and there is no outside shower here. Um.
Oh, is it just a hatch? Is it just a hatch to get on?
Yeah, it's a low hat, it's a three foot high hatch. Um, here it is. And what, glides horizontally and you come up there like that. And that's all back that in where you can't see it. And that's, that's mocked up. And that's this right here.
Uh, okay, so that you can't see.
You can't see, yeah, I don't know. They must have just forgot to take that little, that two by four section out.
Uh, okay, so so just to be very clear, you're you're representing now that that is not, that's no longer part of the application.
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Correct, yeah, I apologize. We should have picked up on that, that that hadn't been removed. Um, this is um, you know, what the hell this is. This is um, um. I don't know what that is, what that mockup is. But you can't see it regardless, so. This is the railing here. So that's the mockup of the railing section. That's that, the the stair headhouse that's being removed. And this, this is that railing. You can barely see above the cornice line um from that far side.
Yeah, you can also see, uh, I think the vantage point, I I did find it as well, where you can see that turning the corner there.
Right here.
Uh, is if you go down closer, almost to Charles Street. In the middle of this, uh, uh, of Chestnut Street there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm surprised.
Yeah, because you, you, when you get anywhere closer to the building, you don't see it at all, uh, but.
Right, right. But anyway, these are just the the photos and then then these were our photos of the mockup. And again, we didn't sort of hunt. Quite as hard as Nick did. Um, but the um, um, where am I? This is the roof. Here. And you don't see it in in these photos. And I think that might be the existing railing. Although I'm not even sure. Um, but the proposed railing is back here somewhere. Um. And the um. But it's probably better to look at Nick's photos because he's got a couple that actually do show where that railing section does become visible.
Yeah.
We just went to the corner. I don't think we went any farther to look. Yeah, there's a photo. From the, from near the corner of River Street and that is the existing handrail. That's the existing metal rail right there. That you do see.
Uh, right, okay.
Um, that's to remain.
Um, right.
And. This is the, these are the photos from the, from from River Street and none of the mockups that we've created are visible from here. Um, and this is the looking between the buildings. This is sort of the range. You know, of what you can see of the back of the building, so there isn't much.
Um, right.
But that's it. That's it, I don't know.
Okay, and then uh.
Top my share, Nick, and you can show yours.
Yeah, it's just a quick photo. It's, it's um. Uh, yeah, like, real quick. Uh, let's see. We got it up here?
No.
Oh, okay. Uh, sure, there we go. Uh, so it's right. Yeah, I heard that wrong. It's right here. Uh, and then it's right here. So it's, you know, with the tree, with, you know, this will be a black rail. I. I I see no issue with this.
I mean, yeah, just to be clear, what we're seeing there is a stretch of two by four, so it's bright yellow and it's thicker. What what's gonna, what would be there under the proposal is the top of a iron rail, thin iron railing, right?
Right.
Okay, and then again, while we're here, Nick, uh, if we go back, yeah, so, so just to be clear, that thing right there, we're saying is actually no longer in the application.
Correct, that way, yeah. That was that little enclosure, that fence enclosure that should have been taken down.
Right, okay. And then I don't know if we have a view. I think we did, uh, maybe the Civic Association's got one from that vantage point that. Further down Chestnut Street toward Charles of the front rail, the corner. Don't know if you have that in your set here. Yeah, there it is. I, there, there's, there's, there's a spot where it's even more visible, but. Hmm, that's not it, um. No, I think that's the. I think that is the, I've got one actually if uh, if we need it, but I mean Rochelle's gonna have it, I think. Uh. Let's see. Um. Well, do we?
Here we go, um. Yeah, I got it right here. Um. It's still a bit, it's still a stretch, but uh, hang on.
Yeah, uh, well, the, so the other thing, if we can go go back to, let's see.
Um, I'm sorry. This right here, Mark?
Maybe that's it, uh.
Hold me on mute, Rochelle.
Uh, let's, let's see. Um, let me, before we do that, I just want to clarify one other thing. If we could go back to the view that showed the mockup of that front rail. Uh, Guy had a nice, uh, taken obviously from up on the roof.
Do I have, uh, is this one here?
Exactly, thank you. So the, the, the triangular shaped headhouse is going away.
Yes.
And I think the other thing that just that it's important to be cognizant of here is, again, this is gonna be a thin iron rail, just like the one to the left there, the existing one that you can see. And it, it's from this vantage point where you can sort of see it on Chestnut Street. It's gonna, it's, even though the headhouse is going away. It's gonna be against that, whatever that is, party wall or something with, with ninety two that's behind it, right?
Yes.
So that the front rail can, will continue all the way to that wall, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so even from the street, you can see this from a little bit of Chestnut Street toward Charles Street. But I think what you'll see is black iron railing against that. Expanse of brick wall that's behind the headhouse right now. Um. And so I think I'm, I'm certainly less bothered by it as a result. It's not against the open sky. I'm not sure how well you'll even be able to to detect it against the brick. Um. I don't even think I noticed the piece of it that's actually visible, the existing railing. And now that you've pointed it out, um, but okay, um, Commissioners, so that's the revised plan, just to recap very quickly. Uh, they have revised the windows in the back to be restored rather than replaced. Thank you, Guy, very much for uh. Your diligence on that and and working that out. Um, we very much appreciate that. Uh, and then the roof deck railing has been pulled back. Uh, it appears to have significantly reduced its bill- visibility. There, there are a few spots that are, where it's still visible, but importantly, that one piece next to the chimney. That's just an oversight that's was meant to be taken down and wasn't, and so that's not part of the plan anymore. So what we're left with is just a little. Slice of this that we can see. Uh, it sounds like a little bit from the far side of Chestnut or River. At the intersection and then further down Chestnut toward Charles. Um, you can't see it from in front of the building. You can't see it from beyond. Further down toward the river on Chestnut Street. With that, Commissioners, any other questions before we take public comment? I'm cognizant of the time. I want to make sure we get Commissioner Jackson before he needs to leave. Um. Okay, Commissioners, um, I don't see anyone else. Okay, we'll take public comment. If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand in your Zoom, using the button on your Zoom panels. Nick will acknowledge you and unmute you.
Okay, um, so first, I just want to say, Mark, just for the record, uh, before we unmute anybody, that I did receive quite a lengthy public comment from Scott and Kristen Patton. Um, at eighty eight Chestnut. I do see that Scott's here and his hand is up, but if, um, Mark, if you could just acknowledge, um, that you've received. That comment and then I will unmute Scott for his.
Yes, uh, we have indeed, uh, just for the record, uh, uh, received written a public comment from Scott Patton, uh, who, as I understand, is a butter. Uh, next door, I believe, eighty uh, Chestnut Street.
Okay.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay, Scott, you're first. Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Commission. Um, and so, Nick, there is a, there is a um, a photo from River Street. That I think more clearly, uh, which I included in my submission, more clearly shows the visibility of that railing. Um, that is one um, opposition I have to this expansion of the roof deck. The, one of the primary um, oppositions I have is, is that this property is uh, noncompliant in many ways. Um, and is trespassing onto our property. Um, they have had, I have had surveys done showing that. They have had surveys done showing that. The inspector services have been out twice to inform them. They have not complied. Um, they are actually holding up. Our building process because they will not remove their um, utilities and other things from our property. Despite twice being informed by inspection services and receiving our stamped. Survey showing their trespasses and they receiving their own commissioned survey showing their trespasses. They also have the idea that that this, this resident would be allocated more. Um, outdoor space when his current outdoor space on the uh, first level floor is noncompliant. Uh, it is covered haphazardly in astroturf. It uses oversized marine link chain. To support it. I believe it is, it is not an authorized deck. We could not find anything in the building zone or otherwise. Uh, that supported uh, the uh, existence of that deck. Uh, the gutters on that deck. Uh, are trespassing onto our property. The downpipes uh, uh, offload water. From their property onto our property, which is illegal. Um, the foundation of that. Um, lower or garden or basement lat actually trespasses up onto our property and they have. Multiple uh trespasses that include HVAC equipment, venting equipment, balconies, zero lot line. Windows, et cetera, so that the idea that they would have permission to move forward. Without resolving these multiple issues seems uh, very inconsistent. Uh, as well as the fact that from River Street, you can still see where this railing exists. And we strongly oppose any approval of any incremental plans until he. And until the tenant there actually addresses the outstanding issues. And just for the record, I offered to pay for, I've offered to pay twice. To have his, his property removed from my property. So provided that he did it with, he would give me the approval in a certain time period and I waited three months and instead he set wires on me. Um, where I was trying to be a generous neighbor to, to, to do this. Um, and and he refused despite the fact that he is known, known to be trespassing by his own surveyors. Under our property.
Thank you very much, Scott. Um, next up we have is uh Rochelle. Uh, Rochelle with the Civic Association, go ahead.
Hmm, speaking of Civic Association, we oppose replacing original windows that are not proven to be beyond repair. As per guideline D one, we do not oppose the existing roof deck replacement. But do oppose the revised roof deck extension as it remains visible from multiple viewpoints on a public way and does not satisfy guideline C three. We do not oppose the relocation of the HVAC equipment to the rear where it is concealed by existing planters. End of comment.
Okay, um, right. Okay, uh, thank you, Rochelle. Sorry about that. Um, okay, Mark, I'm not seeing any other public comments, so we can turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. So public comment is closed. Um, Scott, thank you for coming in. I appreciate your uh, your comments. Um, let me just address them just very briefly here, uh, quickly. Uh, and I appreciate your, your, your frustration in this matter. Um, unfortunately, our, our jurisdiction is, is quite. Uh, limited uh, by our enabling legislation and we're not in a position. Uh, to adjudicate matters, uh, that may be certainly uh indirectly related to construction on, on the property. Uh, but, but that fall outside of um, the details or the, the specifics of the application. Uh, in two respects, one is our jurisdiction is limited to architectural changes that could be seen from a public way. Um, and so we, we're only really allowed to concern ourselves with the roof deck. We would. In the course of our business, normally uh, not consider an application ripe for our consideration if there were zoning issues implicated. In the project, let's just say, for example, uh, an expansion of the building. In the project, let's just say, for example, uh, an expansion of the building. Um, that, uh, would otherwise require a variance because it was increasing blur area ratio above the. Uh, the zoning limit or the height limit or something like that, normally. Uh, our guidance from our department is to, uh, let those issues be vetted before the zoning board of appeal. Uh, before we would consider them. Um, there are no such zoning in, uh, issues implicated here, roof decks are as of right under zoning, and so even the expansion of the roof deck. Uh, does not trigger a requirement for zoning relief. Um, and moreover, the, uh. Trespasses, uh, that you've described, uh, they're not visible from a public way, and so they don't constitute. Um, something within our jurisdiction, uh, it might be an issue for us if they were also in addition to the trespass issues. Uh, considered architectural violations under our statute such that we had cited them as such. Or would need to cite them as such, but we can't see them, and so they don't constitute architectural violations for our purposes, and so our purposes need to be legally. Uh, restricted, uh, to adjudicating. Proposed changes to architectural features that can be seen from a public way, and I, I'm, I know that's not the answer that you were looking for, but we simply don't have the authority. Uh, to require. Uh, that these issues, uh, be, be, uh, resolved. Uh, before we proceed. Um, and moreover, our, our statute. Uh, under our statute, the applicant is entitled to a timely adjudication of their application, uh, and so for those reasons, um. We do need to adjudicate it here. So then, I think the, again, we appreciate the, uh. Consideration that's been given to restoring the windows rather than replacing them, uh, again, just to clarify with respect to the roof deck, the portion that was visible next to the chimney. Uh, is no longer in the application, so we're just left with that front rail, which does have some remaining or residual marginal visibility from. It sounds like the corner of River Street. And, uh, Chestnut Street, uh, guys, simple question. Um, if you pulled it back another foot, the front rail, do you think it would, do you, you think that would cure it, at least with respect to the piece that could be seen just a sliver? From the corner of River Street.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure that would, um, you know, whether you can still see it from Charles Street, I, you know, I couldn't, I, yeah. Yeah, I, I suppose you can get far enough away to see it no matter what we do, but.
Yeah, well, again, I, I think, uh, if we can at least remove any visibility from the one vantage point, we're just left with one more, it's a little further away. And again, it's against that brick wall in the back there, uh, so to my mind, commissioners, that's certainly consistent with. The pieces of margin, the marginally visible pieces of roof deck that we have, uh. We have, uh, approved in the past, and so I, I think I'm fine with it. Um, anyone have a, a, a different view? Uh, how about, uh, just can I get, uh? Some, some, uh, input on just pulling the rail back another one foot to try to make it invisible from River Street? Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I see some nodding.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I'm just trying to go quickly here because I think we're gonna lose Commissioner Jackson momentarily, um. Okay, uh, so, uh, and Nick, is there anything else, I think just to, just to be clear, we're, we're, we really are just talking about at this point that, uh, the, the, the front rail.
Yeah, um, so, and, and then just for the record, I did confirm, um, with guy that, um, he has obtained all of the necessary, uh, zoning variances. Um, so I, I, I don't think there's anything left for us to, uh, adjudicate in, in, in those terms, so, um, yeah.
Okay, so just for the record, uh. Let the record reflect that staff has confirmed, uh, that this, this is ripe for a consideration and no zoning relief is required. Um, and so we can proceed on that basis, um, I will then move that, uh, in, in, in light of the fact that the, uh. Um, application has been revised to, uh, number one, uh, specify restoration of the rear windows instead of replacement and the, uh. Removal of the storm windows which will, um, constitute, uh, uh, a significant improvement visually, we appreciate that as well. Uh, and the significant, uh, reduction in visibility of the roof deck that has, uh, is reflected in the revised application. Uh, that, a- and furthermore, uh, that the portion of mockup, uh, still visible and next to the chimney is in fact been removed from the application. Uh, I would, uh, move that the application be approved, uh, with the proviso that the front rail. Uh, be, be pulled back, uh, an additional twelve inches, uh, from the front of the building, the Chestnut Street side of the building.
I second that.
Okay, great, we will vote, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson. Uh, Commissioner Jackson, you're muted, I think.
Uh, aye.
Sorry, thank you, and thanks for sticking around, Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Guy, for coming in, uh, appreciate it, thanks again for, uh, your, uh, work to revise the application to make it more, uh. Uh, palatable for us, uh, and you'll get a letter from Nick, uh, as usual. Thanks again, and, and, uh, I think you're up next again, right?
Yes, I am, but thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, uh, fifty-six Beacon, staying on, on Guy Grassi here, Guy, go ahead, you want to just tell us, give us a quick summary of what you're proposing?
Sure, and, uh, Nick, I, you want me to screen share again?
Yes, please.
Um, hi, yeah, my name's Guy Grassi, I'm the, the architect for, um, for the renovations to, um. To, uh, fifty-six Beacon, this is actually a building. Um, that I worked on back in nineteen ninety-seven once upon a time. And, uh, did some alterations, did a lot of work to this house, it's a beautiful house, um, the, um. Um, there's a new owner, there's some, uh, folks that, one of them actually grew up on Beacon Hill, um, and has lived here most of her life and, uh. Um, it's, it's a couple, an o- older couple, um. They, uh, they love the house, they, um, they, they want to do, um. Um, I think some, some thoughtful and sensitive alterations to it, there's a couple of things that, um. Um, are a little bit unusual, but this is an unusual house, um, most of the work is a restoration. Um, but the, uh, I'll go through the. The, uh, the whole presentation. I'm assuming you can see my screen now?
Yes.
See if I can make this quicker. There we go. Scroll. Okay. So this is a house that, um, was built in, I think, eighteen sixteen, um. It's, um, was a federal style townhouse, it's gone through some, um, uh, several alterations on the rear. The front is largely intact, um, um, from its original condition. The windows have been replaced, um, um, I think probably back in nineteen ninety-seven. Although I'm not quite sure, this has also been altered twice since we worked on it. Um, by, by s- other owners, so I'm not sure what the vintage of the windows are, but they're all, all of the windows except the three. In this dormer at the top are insulating glass units. Um, and they're actually a little clunky in terms of the proportions and the dimensions of the, um. Uh, of the muttons, um, but I've got a bunch of photos of those. Um, and, but I'll just sort of go through this. Um, this is a view of the, of the building here, um, from the common. Um, you can see the little skylight up on the top at the ridge. Um, that's been replaced, that's all new copper work and a new skylight that was done a few years back. Um, the slate work is in decent shape and the facade is in general in decent shape. On the front, we're just proposing to restore it, we would like to replace the windows again, make them a little more delicate in their detail. Um, but also do them with a, an insulating glass. Uh, we would like to replace these three. Which are old windows, I don't know if they're original, they're curved sash and single glass and they're pretty rotten. Um, and it's just, those are the only three that I think are, are, are old and they're not, uh, insulating glass units currently. Um, this is the front of the building, it's, um, at the front stoop, one thing, oops, sorry. One thing you'll notice is the way that the, this, the, the Beacon Street slopes quite a lot in this area. And you can see the first riser of the stairs, so it disappears into the brickwork here. Uh, and then of course, the brickwork running of the sidewalk running up to the tip of the bay. Um, the owners would like to put an iron railing system here and plantings in this area. The three buildings up the hill from here, starting with this building at fifty-five. All have iron railings and sort of little mini gardens in the front. Um, it was brought up at the Civic Association that they wanted to make sure that we own the land before we do it, and of course, we'll do a survey before we do that. I do have some evidence though, some, some more evidence, some older site plans of the, and surveys of the neighbors and. And assessors' maps and things that all indicate that the property line is right about the tip of this stair. And it aligns with the tip of this bag, this bay, this, this wall, this garden wall actually curves out. And that looks consistent all along Beacon Street, is that all the buildings are set back that little bit. Um, and the prop, the, you know, the public sidewalk ends there. My assumption is that when this was first built in eighteen sixteen, these were dirt sidewalks and a dirt street, that there were no actual sidewalks and. That's probably the original condition from the eighteen sixteen version of it. Since then, um, the, the sidewalk was repl- was installed. And I think going back to eighteen seventy, is, or the seventies, eighteen seventies or so. It looks like the brick sidewalk did go up to the building, uh, when that was installed, again, it's probably not the original condition from eighteen sixteen. Um, but I think this, this being brick here is probably fairly old, um. But, um, and again, you see, you know, some of these houses do have little gardens in the front and some of them don't, and, and, and that's kind of the deal. Um, these windows in the basement are also being, um, um, replaced, they're an odd configuration. We were proposing to replace them with the same mutton pattern that's there, um, which is a five over five, which is sort of strange. Um, you know, it's been brought up that they probably historically were six over sixes or at least a six light window. Um, and we're happy to do that, we were just proposing to do it because that's what was there, and I don't know why, who would have done that if there hadn't been something that they had found earlier. Other than that, we're just sort of restoring the, um, the brickwork and repairing and replacing some of the hardware on the. On the shutters and that sort of stuff, so it's, there's very little, uh, alteration going on. Um, this is, this building was once a twin, uh, with fifty-seven. Uh, fifty-seven has had some changes to the facade, it's had a, a big dormer. Um, brought out a shed dormer up on the roof, it's got a bay that comes off the second floor. Um, but they're still, you know, relatively similar, you know, quite similar buildings. Um, one of the things we'd like to do also is to replace the deck boards because they're rotting here. On the iron railing, on the iron balcony system, I'm sure they've been replaced many times over the years. The ones that are there look like they're twenty, thirty years old and they're not in great shape. And that's kind of it, um, just some of the detail, these are the. This is that curved dormer up here that has the old windows, that you can see the straight glass and the curved sash and these, uh, in these units. Um. On the back, um, this garage i- is, um, obviously in addition to the building. Um, um, I think someone from the Civic Association pointed out that there seems to be a permit from nineteen fifty-nine to construct this. Um, the garage doors are sort of a suburban raised panel, you know, overhead door, um, they're in bad shape and they're kind of falling apart. Uh, we would like to replace them, the gate is also in bad condition, we'd like to replace this. Our proposal was to do a vertical board gate door that's basically exactly what's here and then match that with these two doors. Um, but with, um, rails and styles on them, so they look more, a little bit more ga- gate-like. Um, it is a, uh, you know, a modern addition, although it hasn't been designed in any kind of a modern style, certainly. Um, these granite lintels are both cracked, there's a crack here and there's a crack here, there seems to be some rust jacking that's taken place. So we would like to replace them in kind, just because they're failing. Um, we'd be nice to use them again, but they're, they basically have, they're already, there's, this one projects out about three inches past the brick. Um, so there's been some, some water infiltration that's caused some problems there. Um, this is just a view down Branch Street, um. And you can see going up the hills, a two-story, um, carriage house behind their, their structure. Um, the, um, the back of our building is here of fifty-six. Um, one peculiarity you'll notice is that there's a very tall elevator headhouse and chimney pair. Um, at fifty-five and then also a tall chimney that's part of fifty-six. Um, and there's also an elevator headhouse that's very tall, it's twelve, twelve and a half feet tall, I think, I forget the number exactly. On, on our neighbor at, um, fifty-seven. And one of the things we're proposing is to bring an elevator shaft up to the same height as this one and attach to it. So in the same, it's actually pushed a little bit in from this one. And I'll show you mockups of that. Um, the, uh, this is fifty-five here and this is where you see the back of fifty-six, and of course, this is the garage at fifty-six. So because of the angle you're seeing it. This is another view, this is fifty-seven here. And fifty-six, this is the beginning, just as you come down Branch Street, the little bit you can see of it. One of the things in our proposal was to remove these infill panels of what must have been some kind of an opening, I don't have any old historical images of that. But what we'd like to do is push the blackout panel back and then do s- uh, an iron, uh, an iron grill work. In that location, just so it's a little more attractive. Um, the, um, other than that, you don't really see much in this view of the building, you do see from this view, the elevator headhouse next door right there. Here's another view, um, of what's visible from Branch Street, and you'll notice the sort of gap in the windows and the fenestration here. Um, we're proposing a pair of windows to match these two in this location. Um, only one of them will be of benefit to us, the other one will actually be over the elevator shaft, we would black it out on the inside. Um, but it seemed to be appropriate to, to just to balance this, this section, this whole section was added. Um, somewhere along the line, once upon a time, the roof pitched from the ridge back down to the gutter line here. And with probably had small dormers back there, that's all long gone and this, this has been replaced. Um, the copper works not in great shape, um, and, but we need to do some work to repair that. Um, but other than that, um, we would again like to replace these windows, these are all insulating glass, modern units. Um, you also notice here, the, um, there's a, a roof deck hatch. Um, this is a copper clad, uh, roof deck hatch that comes almost to the edge of the gutter. And it, it opens this way, it sort of motorizes and it's, it's, uh, turned sideways. And the hatch opens, that's why there's no railing system right there, and then right here, you're seeing the HVAC equipment. It's a whole bunch, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around here, there's a bunch of, I think there's nine or eight or nine, um, AC units right there, um, that are visible from Branch Street. Our proposal is to get rid of all of this. Um, we're, we're proposing to take the HVAC equipment and sink it down into a lower level rear L roof. Um, behind where we were putting those, um, um, the, those iron grills. Uh, so that they all go away, and then this would go away because we're proposing to move the bulkhead to the backside of the pitched roof. Where it's not visible from anywhere. Um. Um, this is that rear L, so the mechanical equipment would actually go behind this wall. In a well we'll create by hollowing out that roof, just lowering that roof down to here. Because it's quite high inside and then, and then sinking heat pumps, because we're gonna replace them all and we'll put heat pumps behind that wall. The other part of this proposal is to construct a, um, pergola in this area. And it's set back from this plane, but it is, it turns out to be visible, we didn't think it was gonna be, but we, when we mocked it up, we could see that. That there's parts of it that are visible from Branch Street from a couple of locations, this one view of it, i- it will be from the far side. Um, just slightly visible. Um, and again, here you see the, um, you know, the elevator headhouse and, and the, and the other stuff that's back there. Um. Just scrolling through, this is the roof deck, you can see the, uh, the very tall elevator headhouse next door. And then the chimneys that are here. Um, this is that roof that slopes back, so our new bulkhead will be over here. And none of that would be visible from anywhere. Uh, and then this all goes away and the deck just extends across to the party wall or to the elevator headhouse. Um, this is another view of that elevator headhouse, this, this wall is a party wall that slopes up, this is about five feet tall here, and then there's another. Seven or eight feet of, of elevator headhouse here, you can see the black party wall here as well. It's been rubber roofed over, and then this is the location where we're proposing our, our bulkhead, so we'll have a hatch. Come out of this roof that'll open and then you'll be able to just walk out onto the roof deck from here and we'll leave all of this intact. Um. This is the, uh, elevator at, um, elevator headhouse at, um, at fifty-five right next to us, and then this is. The, the, the chimney at fifty-six where it's got another chimney behind it, which are also equally as tall. Just to get the flues above that, that elevator shaft. Um, this is a picture of that deck on the second floor where we're posing the, um, the, the pergola system. So that pergola will be up here somewhere and I'll show you some drawings of that. Um, and then this is just a photo of that roof. Um, this is the section that we're gonna hollow out to drop our heat pumps into. So that they're not visible from the roof, there's some equipment up there that'll also go away, and we're proposing a skylight to replace this deck here. And we're proposing a skylight to replace this deck here. All of that's been mocked up, the, both the um, the HVAC equipment and the skylight. And none of the, none of that was visible uh from anywhere on Branch Street, at least that I could find. This is just a, a Google Earth view of the back of the building. You can see the elevators, the, this elevator shaft here and the extensions. There's a whole lot of stuff on these roofs back here on some of these buildings, which I think is unusual. And then you can see the, the roof in here of the back of our building and the the building at fifty seven. This is a close-up photo of one of the windows. The mutton's about seven eighths wide. And in its curtain configuration. This is one of the triple hungs. Um, I've just got a whole series of photos. If you zoom in on it, you'll see the, the, the um, the insulating glass units. You can see the, the spacer bar for all these insulating glass. This is an unusual window in that it's a door. So it's a, it was a triple hung, I suppose, once upon a time. And it's become what looks to be a, a triple hung unit, except these two units are flush and it actually hinges. And it gives you access to that balcony out there for service purposes. So we would replace that in kind. And again, we would just make the muttons a little bit narrower because we can, you know, we just have the ability to do that. Here's some of the windows in the back. Again, you can see the insulating glass unit. All of the storm windows that exist on the building will be removed. One of the reasons the storm windows around there is because the windows are so leaky. They're, the frames are in poor condition and they're not square. This is just a close-up photo again, showing the storm unit on the outside and then the insulating glass unit on the inside. These are just uh on, on the rear, further up in the building, sort of more typical double hungs. But again, same thing, you can see how heavy the, the mountains are. Uh, another, just a close-up photo of the windows. These are the um curved windows in the dormer. You can see the rot here. The, the frame is split here and is rotting. Apparently, they continue to just repair and paint this. The property managers, Giovanni and Joshua are on the call if yeah, and they're probably, they've been dealing with this stuff and can tell you probably more than I can. But I've just got a bunch of photos that show what the difficulty is.
Guy, I'm, I'm recommending replacement, so I don't think we need to do any of this.
Oh, okay, fine. No, I appreciate it. Yeah, they're in tough shape. These are the, the basement windows. Peculiar configuration. We're happy to go to six light uh units here, or you know, or keep them. And then just some detailed photos of the outside. This is a close-up of that window and the copper work back there. In the drawings. This is the um proposed front yard plan. Let me go out of this view. So I can zoom in on it. So we're proposing to um, do a granite curb at the property line and return it back to join the granite curb and, and yard at the, in, at the neighbor's house at fifty five. And then plant this area, leave the granite area wells that are there. And just to um, just to plant it out, that, that curb would slope. And then the fence would be level. And I'll show you the elevation of that. And then we would stop the fence just shy of the, of the railing system, so they don't actually touch. And the top of that fence would just be a little bit lower than the scroll on the, on the handrail. As if you recall from the photograph, this tread is about a half an inch or an inch proud of the brick at this point, and that would be the case for the um, the granite curb. This is a, just a partial close-up elevation of that condition, so that's the first step. And then this would be the granite curb, just running, you know, close to the, to the brick. Uh, and then a, a matching uh railing system that matches the um, the existing handrail would be the front yard rail. Uh, and then again, just stopping it short so it's not in contact or connected and just slightly lower than the handrail is our proposal. Let me back out. Oh, sorry. The um, this is the second floor. Um, so this is the, the location of that pergola. We would have four columns and a, and a wood roof on this. And then there's a glass top being proposed on top of the, the wood pergola. Due to the visibility, it might be, might be, make more sense to like hold the glass back, which we are happy to do. Just in case, so that the glass portion of that would not be visible. I was surprised to see that it was at all visible.
Can you tell us, I'm sorry, Guy, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you just explain the glass part? I had not appreciated that that was a, a feature. How would that work?
Well, we build the wooden pergola just like you would normally with, with beams here and here, and then these purlins that run back and forth. And then the glass would sit on standoffs, these little, that are about an inch, an inch tall. Um, and hold the glass on to the top of the pergola beams. So from the underside, it was still just looks just like a pergola, but there would be glass on top of it. You know, just a, a layer of laminated glass that would sit just on top. And my thought was, you know, just to, if there's concern about seeing the edge of that glass, we can just hold the edge of the glass back a couple of feet. You know, and I think it goes away. I think at that point you don't see it. But we'll, we'll show you the mockup photos and it'll make more sense.
Okay, okay, thanks.
This is the um, the, the roof. Um, so we've got the existing condition of the roof and the proposed condition of the roof. So you can see the, the, the bulkhead is gone and the, the bulkhead is here and the, and the mechanical equipment here. And then the proposed condition is our skylight and hatch, which is not visible here. And then the new elevator shaft, which will give these folks the ability to actually get up onto this roof and use it on a regular basis. It's quite a hike to get up there. And uh, and, and then it would be uh, uh, basically attached to the, the existing headhouse and slightly back from it. That's up there currently. And this is the location of the headhouse at fifty five, uh, just to our east. So it's an uncommon situation. I wouldn't normally even attempt to propose this unless we had sort of tandem headhouses, elevator shafts on either side. And this one's sort of attached to it. This is a cross-section, just showing that. This is our proposed headhouse. This is the one next door. And I think they're actually, theirs actually projects a little bit beyond ours. And we didn't draw it that way. They have a little skylight on top of theirs. At fifty seven, we will not. Uh, so we're gonna have ours align with theirs, with their flat part, and then their skylight would be taller. And then sightlines vary depending on where you are on Branch Street. Um, so we were just trying to illustrate. This, this is the um sunken area where we're proposing the HVAC equipment. Uh, and from everything we've done with the mockups and everything, we can't see them. It does peak up just slightly higher than the roof that's there. So that's what's been mocked up is that little that little portion that sticks up above the roof. And then this skylight that we're proposing us also been mocked up and it's not visible. And then this is a cross-section uh through that pergola. Uh, and so I can zoom in on that. You can see it a little bit better. So basically, it's a column, a beam system here, and then these purlins that run back and forth, and then the glass just sitting on, on top. And again, we're happy to just bring that back, you know, so about two feet. So I think it, it, it would the glass would not be part of the application, I suppose, at that point. Because I think that's probably what you're gonna want to see, or not see, I should say. Front and back, um, no real changes to the front facade, other than the replacements and repairs to the windows and stuff. Here's the um, the railing system and, and it's, you know, you know, all of it. I can zoom in a little bit. Just so you can see it a little better. Our thought was, we, we set it at the top of the granite here and then run it horizontally across. And again, stop it just shy of the um, of the handrail system. I think it's a nice alteration. I don't, you know, I, I think it, it improves the appearance and makes it a little more residential feeling in the front. But I understand there's, you know, maybe some historical issues with that. The um pergola in the back, so you can see that here. And again, I think you only see about this much of it. You just see the top edge of it. And or from maybe this line is about what we think you can see and, and above. And then the skylight and, and the, and all that business. And then going up. The pair of windows we're proposing to add here, uh, leave the copper work and repair it. And then replace the other windows. So these would match these uh exactly and then form a, a symmetrical rear facade there, which I think is more appropriate. The um replacement of the section of railing system that's missing. And then this is the um proposed standing seam or flat seam copper enclosed headhouse, elevator headhouse up on the roof. The door to the elevator would be copper clad and the frame would be copper clad. And we would do the same copper work on the door that's on the uh, the side of the elevator. So at an oblique angle, you will see a little bit of that door, I think, from the ground. And then I think these are just the details of the windows. We are gonna, this is the existing window sash and we're gonna, most of them are about a one inch mutton. Some of them are a little bit narrower. Um, we're gonna reduce them all um down to um, um, three quarters. Uh, and then the um, the triple hungs and all of that stuff. And then the, the replacement of the curved sash. And then, uh, lastly, we have um, a, a rendering that we've done. Um, I know it's not super accurate because it's just a a um, um, it's done in um, in Photoshop. We're just trying to give you a sense of what that would look like up there once it's patinaed. Uh, so you can see the before and after photo where the roof deck is cleaned up and then the elevator headhouse, you know, projects out. Here you, um, you don't see it because it's hidden behind chimneys. In this view, you see more of it, you know, uh, as you get away from the chimney again. You can see theirs and ours here, and then the railing system more complete. And um, that's about it. And then I have mockup photos, I think, um, um, I think, um, oh, these are plans. I think Nick has also some, some photos. Find my mockup photos, sorry for this. I thought they were in there. Here we go. So this is a photograph of the elevator headhouse. I don't know if any of you had a chance to go look at that. And then right there, you can see the top of the, that's the top of the pergola. That actually is the glass line um of the pergola. So if the, if the, if you take the glass back a little bit, all you'll see is the wood beam and the purlins there. And this view, as soon as you step to the left, it goes away. And when you step to the right, it goes away. But in this view, at this particular angle, you can see just that corner of it. And then you see it again, I believe, as you go up the hill a little bit, up Branch Street. None of the stuff on the roof here is visible. And again, this is that window. As you go up the hill, again, all of that goes away, that pergola, um, because of the garage. And then this is the the elevator, um, for, you know, uh, as mocked up. And then the, I, of course, all this business goes away. And here it is again, that's the elevator shaft. It, we will actually connect it. Because of the configuration of the party wall, it was difficult to mock that up where it's actually shown connecting to it, but it will. We don't want to leave a gap between the two. And then this again is where you start to see the pergola again, just that sort of upper section of it. When you get past the garage, but not past this building next door. And then as you get, I think, a little farther away, oh, this is a, once again, it's, it's hidden by the, by the garage. Um, and then these are just pictures of the, you know, the construction. So that's the pergola as mocked up. And then the uh, the skylight that you can see. These guys did an amazing job of building this mockup. And then the mechanical equipment back here, you can just see. And again, from the ground, you don't see it. So that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Guy, for the thorough presentation. Appreciate that. So uh, just to recap pretty quickly uh, in terms of the major items. There's the uh addition of the sort of front garden area, the elevator headhouse, the pergola in the back. Introduction of, of a pair of new windows on the top floor in the back. And that copper clad structure, replacement of other windows, which it sounds like are either uh not historic or are Nick is recommending replacement, the case of the, that uh, um, the windows on the very top in the front. And then uh, just to sort of cleaning up some of the other uh features on the rear, the moving the AC equipment, uh, and then uh reintroducing these decorative iron panels where those sort of simple ones are on the second floor rear L. Is that a fair summary?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, very good. Just a quick question on those panels that actually conveniently are now shown here. Um, what's there now? I couldn't quite make it out in the photo, the three panels on the top of the second floor L to the right of the pergola?
It's black pink plywood, I believe.
Oh, okay.
It's basically in the plane of the brick.
Right, okay, um, let's see, uh, do we still have a quorum, I hope? We do, just barely. Okay, so thank you for uh setting up the mockups. I did have a chance to go look at them. Uh, I did, I was able to see both the pergola from the short stretch of Branch Street. And certainly the head, elevator headhouse, uh, which was also, you didn't mention it, but quite visible from the common. Albeit it's some removed, but if you just go into the common, um, you can, you can see it quite prominently. So I, I think I have some consternation over that, uh, candidly. I didn't appreciate that you intended to connect it to the one next door. Part of my consternation over it, candidly, is the gap. Which I think draws attention to it. But um, before we get into the discussion. Commissioners, um, any further clarifying questions about what is proposed? I know it's a big project and a lot going on, but I think that was a pretty good summary. Okay, hearing none, why don't we take public comment and then we'll get into it on the uh, on the details? If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand using the button or your Zoom panel and Nick will unmute you.
Hey, uh, Rochelle.
Sorry, so it's going, it's a lot. Okay. Vegan on Civic Association, we oppose in part and do not oppose in part this application as follows. Front garden, absent evidence of a missing historical feature, we oppose adding a front garden and fence as it does not satisfy guideline A three and is not appropriate to the original style of this building, which is a double townhome with fifty seven Beacon Street. So does not satisfy guideline A four. Front windows, as most of the front windows are potentially not historic. As originally, the windows were two over two from eighteen seventy to nineteen thirty and were replaced in nineteen eighty-six. We do not oppose replacing in kind the windows that are confirmed to not be historic to satisfy guideline D one. Headhouse. We oppose the addition of the new headhouse as it does not satisfy guideline C four. Which states new group access structure shall always consist of, we did hatches or low-profile headhouses, which are not visible from a public way. And the proposed headhouse is visible from multiple viewpoints on multiple public ways. Pergola, we do not oppose the proposed pergola, but request applicant make adjustments so it is not visible. Rear windows, copper mansard. We oppose the proposed new double window on the copper mansard portion of the rear facade as new openings are not allowed as per guideline A seven and symmetry as addressed in guideline A eight states in part is common to find architectural differences between the main facade and secondary elevations and such features and hierarchies should be respected. Rear windows, rear L panels. We do not oppose replacing the painted plywood panels with grills as proposed, even though no historic evidence supports it as per guideline A three. The proposed new work is appropriate detail with regard to size, shape, material and design, which does not satisfy guideline A three. Garage doors, service door. We do not oppose replacement of either the garage doors or the service door as proposed, as neither are historic. End of comment.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Rochelle, and uh, nice to see Kitty again. All right, Mark, uh, that's all the public comment that we have for this application. So back to you.
Okay, thank you, Rochelle. Uh, so public comment is closed. Uh, let me just take the opportunity to use Rochelle's nice summary here. I'm looking at the written version, uh, and I'll just take it in reverse. To start the discussion, commissioners, um, garage door, service door, I'm fine with that. I think it's an improvement. Guy, just one clarifying question on that. It doesn't really matter for my purposes, but are those overhead doors that are just made to look like they are uh, sort of vertically constructed rather than horizontal? Or how do they work?
Yes, they're, they're, they're overhead doors with, you know, four panels. It'd be like a, you know, a minimal seam between them.
Yeah, you're right. When they're closed, right, the, the butt, the joints butt up against each other, you can't really see the seams, right? Okay. So garage doors, uh, service doors, I'm fine with that. I think they're an improvement. The replacing of the painted plywood panels with metal grills, I'm fine with that. I think that's an improvement. The uh new double window, I think we should talk about that if, if, if there's some Um, the, uh, new double window, I think we should talk about that if, if, if there's some concern about that. It is a new opening. Um, uh, Rochelle has pointed out, okay, we have this guideline that talks about new openings and facades, and we, we've had a lot of discussion about that guideline the last year. Um, I think it is, it is, uh, uh, an interesting question, maybe left for the philosophers for the moment, but is a mansard a facade? Or is it a roof? It's probably halfway in between. It's maybe both or neither. I don't know. But um, I think my view on that is that I'm okay with it, um, because number one, uh, sort of consistent with the way we've talked about this and other, other, uh, applications, some of which nearby this one and, and sort of recent in time, forty-six Beacon comes to mind. Um, where we made it an important distinction between, uh, introduction of new openings and facades that, uh, sort of fundamentally either, uh, remove, erase, or otherwise change the historical interpretation of the facade, the understanding of when the building was built and the story in quotes, as we've called it. Um, I don't see that this introduction of this window does that. I don't think it, it fundamentally or really at all changes the interpretation of that facade or that portion of the facade. You know, it's a secondary facade to begin with. Um, it's high up on the building. Um, it's otherwise unremarkable. It's not a character defining feature of the building or even that a portion of the building. It's obviously a later addition, although obviously of some vintage at this point. Um, and, uh, I don't think it really changes the architectural vocabulary of the rear facade uh, in a way that's a historical. So personally, I think I'm okay with that. I think it's consistent with other determinations we've made about introducing new windows in, in facades um, in the last couple of years. Uh, then let's go, uh, the pergola again. Um, it's set against the back of the building. It's, uh, I guess in my mind, I think I'm okay with it. I, I do wonder if it could be made to be uh, less visible, but it's only visible from a short stretch of Branch Street. Um, it's again set against the back of the building, which is otherwise remarkable. It's not obscuring or otherwise. Altering important architectural features of the building, details and so forth. Um, it's largely ornamental in, in nature in terms of what we're seeing. And, uh, so I think I'm okay with that. And then finally, uh, let's just skip to the windows for a second. Again, the windows are not historic, so I think I'm fine with all of the proposed changes to the windows. We might want to worry those basement level windows, the, the unusual five over five sash, uh, which brings us to the front garden and the head house. And, uh, I, I think I will just say candidly, I think both are problematic, uh, for me a- as proposed. Let's start the discussion with, and let's, let's sort of, um, let, let me ask my fellow commissioners, uh, garage door, service door, any, any, uh, issues with that? Any, anyone object to what's proposed?
So far, I'm pretty much agreeing with you. My only question as far as the windows, I know that oh, and I would come on the front of, of, of the house, um. I know that there's an idea that some of them are old. I want to know, Nick, anything original? Nothing original?
No, nothing original.
Okay.
And I think the ones that Guy mentioned that were somewhat old, I think they're from the thirties. I don't
I mean, the thirties.
Yeah, well.
But they're pretty beat up though, Nick, right?
They're, they're very beat up. Um, I, I, I don't think they're worth saving personally.
Okay.
Yeah.
And those are the ones that are highest up, right, furthest away.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and Arian, just to clarify, one other thing I think that's a benefit here is the other windows, which are not historic, are already insulated glass, but they've got roughly seven inches buttons, and he's going to make them smaller. So actually, we're getting, that's a big improvement, I think, getting back some of the delicacy that you would have had originally in the facade, uh, of this building. So that's seems to me is, is quite an, is, is a
No, I, I like that idea as, as well. I just was, um, you know, if, if, if something's original, I don't want to touch it.
Sure.
Okay.
For sure, we want to, we want to
The idea of the garden up front or, or how we, uh, turning that going into the brick sidewalk? Uh, what's with the property maybe? So from what I understand, he doesn't know yet whether it's actually part of their property or not. And there was mentioned that it seemed that in older, uh, uh, documentation that the sidewalk did go up to the windows. So if that's the case, how would that be their property?
Well, I, I think I've got a, a, a more fundamental, um, issue with it, which is just the, the historical appropriateness and
I mean, well, there's that too, but I mean,
Yeah, in other words, I, I think I'm, I'm not prepared to approve it in any case on the historical grounds, which would render the, the property line issue kind of moot. Um, looks like we've got a, 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 something there that, uh, yeah, just like the front of the steps.
Yeah, it's, it's an older survey of fifty-seven. Um, and, and, yeah, and there's, we, we have a couple of things. It, I'm pretty confident that that's where the property line is, just
Yeah.
I just don't have a, an actual instrument survey that we did recently, so, you know.
So, so here's, here's my issue with it, Guy. I think, um, you, you are right in pointing out that it's not like none of the buildings have uh, at least a g- roughly analogous treatment. Uh, however, I think, you know, the distinction I'm, in my mind is looking at this whole block. Uh, there's really only two uh, treatments of these buildings and it's enti- it's quite consistent. And one is what you've got in your building, which is no, uh, iron fencing, uh, and so forth at the street level. Uh, and the other is what you see right next door, uh, with this other also spectacular, wonderful twin building at, I guess it must be fifty-five and fifty-four, which is, and, um, forgive me, I'm not even sure I know what you call this exactly, but the treatment of the, the granite uh, sort of curbing with an iron fence, but then this, this sort of colonade treatment, for lack of a better term. Uh, Nick, if you could bring up maybe the Google Maps or something, or whoever is
I can show you some photos of some of the, um, some of those buildings.
Yeah, so and, and this is your building fifty-six, as I should, I should just say, uh, is a really fine building that is, um, um, you know, part of this pair of really fine buildings that, and, and your building in particular is, um, while not entirely original, is remarkably uh, um, uh, close to its likely original state on the front facade, at least the back obviously has been ra- radically altered many times over the years and so forth, but um, so it is this kind of wonderful example of a, a very fine federal period building in its uh, pretty close to original state. And, um, you know, so I, I think we, we've got sort of two flavors going on on this block of Beacon Street. What you've got, no fencing, no colonade, uh, and then next door uh, at the Prescott House and, and next door to that, this sort of kind of lovely ornate colonade that sort of connects the iron fencing at the bottom uh, with the, the balcony at the front. Uh, you even see that treatment, uh, on the otherwise much different and much later building uh, at fifty-four, but you don't, again, you don't have it at, uh, uh, at, at, sorry, fifty-two, you don't have it any fencing at fifty-three. Um, and then going further down the block, um, you know, the buildings at, uh, I believe it is, uh, well, let's, let's just go all the way down, um, to the King's Chapel Parish House, like another twin building, uh, doesn't have any iron fencing or curbing at the bottom. Uh, then I think it's fifty, as in eight, uh, but then the house, um, at uh, sixty-one does have the colonade treatment again.
Where's the Google, where's the Google, uh?
Yeah, can we, can, uh, yeah, so that's fifty-two right there. Uh, okay, so fifty-three maybe is the one.
Yeah.
Uh, one counter example, although that's a um, in terms of its vintage is, is clearly a, I think a newer building or has, has had a, a newer addition, uh, that rusticated uh, stone treatment at the, at the lower level. Maybe that's the kind of the, uh, uh, exception that, that, that proves the rule here, but that, that, you know, it's a, it's a brownstone building rather than brick. Uh, it's clearly sort of, uh, you know, Italianate style, if you will, got the large Victorian cornice and so forth. So it's, it's a, it's from a different period. Um, and it's, I think it's a kind of a, a different kind of treatment altogether. That's the one we're talking about, just the brown one in the corner. But then the, see, there's this colonade treatment I'm talking about next door. And then if you go further down the block, you don't see the curbing. Uh, then you do see the colonade again, a little further down at sixty-one, the one with the green door and the green shutters, uh, which is just behind the tree right now. Um, so I, I think, um, absent any evidence uh, that this was an ori- original feature to the building, uh, particularly given the otherwise really consistent treatment of this particular feature on the buildings just right in this block. And the fact that this is really, there's a nice old photo from what looks like twenties, um, from the cars or thirties maybe. That, uh, that, yeah, and you, you can see those column, there's sixty-one right there just to the right. So you can see the ones, those don't have it, then sixty-one does have it, but it has the colonade uh, connecting the balcony and so forth. And so, um, I think, you know, in light of that, uh, there's, there's a pretty strong statement of, uh, where and, and under what circumstances uh, that curbing and, and, and granite railing was used on that block of Beacon Street, and there's no evidence that it was ever extant on this building. And so I think particularly in light of its otherwise pretty, pretty darn original uh, condition. Um, that I'm not comfortable with it in this case, I'm, I'm afraid. There's the, there's the, the colonade treatment I was talking about. Um, so you basically, if you see a garden, with the exception of fifty-three, which is a very different, there's the brown one that, that except, there's the exception that kind of proves the rule, which is this uh, much more Victorian style building that's much later in the nineteenth century. Other than that, everything else is either a, a colonade connecting the balcony on the second floor to the, the little miniature garden and, and, and iron fencing at the street level or nothing. And that, that, it's literally one of those two things. And, and evidently from this photo, that's probably been the case for a hundred years at least.
It's actually interesting, the, 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 we did, um, forty, forty beacon and thirty-nine beacon, and those are also um, eighteen twelve federal style houses, um, just in the next block up, and they both have gardens in the front uh, and did so originally. Um, I have an old photo too of, um, of, of that block um, that shows them. But you, you know, it's, it's, you see it here and you see it there and, and then you don't see it. It's, I think it's, it's fair to say, yeah, I think if you go up to the
Yeah, I mean, forty-five has it as well, um, which is quite early eighteen oh six, uh, but forty-five is, you know, it's set back from the street a little bit, and some of these features, I think, the ones that, the thirty-nine and forty are set back a little bit further than I think, than the property line of your building.
They're pretty close. It's, it's very shallow. It's a very shallow front yard. It's almost, it's, it's very similar, but yeah, you, you, it might be a little bit further back.
Yeah, let's, let's take another look at fifty-six itself, to ungoogling. So the way it looks right now.
So that's it, Arian, with the black door there.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking, I'm just thinking. If it's not broke, don't fix it.
Should add that to the guidelines.
It's in there somewhere.
Yeah, uh, any other, Sandy, do you want to weigh in on this?
No, I just agree that I think the variety, as they say, variety is a spice of life, and I think this, um, I don't, I don't know, to be practical about it, I don't know what the heck you'd put in there anyhow, it's so small. So I, I'd go for leaving it alone.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so then the other, uh, big one is the elevator head house. Um, yeah, this is, is quite prominent. I, I appreciate that there is one kind of on either side, but it's twelve feet tall and you really can see it uh, from the common. Uh, Guy, is there any way to make this thing smaller, the head house?
No, I wish there was. Um, we've actually pushed it down, so I think we, we would have a step or two um, to get up onto the deck from the elevator. Um, it's just, um, yeah, it's very difficult to make it any shorter. Um.
So the idea is it's got, it, it's a, it's the full height of the cab plus the machinery on top of it, because the cab is actually going up to the deck, the roof deck level, right? But you've already got, you've got, you looked like in your plan, you, you do have a way to get out to the roof though, right, existing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can walk out. It's just, yeah, it's just, obviously, it's, 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 um, especially as you get older, it's, um, it would be able to take the elevator.
Right.
Again, I wouldn't even have considered it here, uh, other than the fact that there is one on either, on both of our adjoining neighbors' buildings. You know, it's kind of an unusual situation.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate the effort to try to make it blend into that roofscape, for lack of a better word. Uh, I just think, again, we, we have this guideline that kind of does direct us toward making these things as innocuous as possible, uh, and wherever possible, just use it a hatch so you don't even see it at all. And this is, uh, quite a, uh, I think afar prior from that, unfortunately. Yeah, so that's, I think, my feeling about that. And, um, as well.
The fact that the, um, the neighboring
Yes, thank you, Nick. Um, right, and, and, and Nick had, had, uh, thank you, Nick, for, for looking into this. We wanted to establish, well, before we, uh, just say no, uh, is, are the ones next door, are they, are they, you know, modern features that we might have approved? And, uh, it looks like Nick was able to find for fifty-four, Nick, sorry, which one, five?
Uh, was fifty-seven.
I'm fifty-seven, I'm conflating the dates, I'm sorry. Uh, that it, it, it is a relatively modern addition, but before the historic district, so it's something that would have been
Sorry, the property's fifty-seven, the, the date of construction is fifty-two, sorry.
Fifty-two, yeah, yeah. Uh, so I mean, obviously it's modern addition because they wouldn't have had an elevator in the nineteenth century, but, uh, early nineteenth century, but, uh, but it's not like we approved the one, uh, next door. And so that, that would have, might have been a mid beginning factor, certainly, but, uh, afraid not in this case. Um, any other, uh, views to the contrary about the, or other views at all on the elevator head house, Sandy or Arian? Okay, um, pergola. Again, I think I'm, I'm okay with that. Um, you can see it for a little bit, a branch street. I think I had to be kind of up on the cur- on the sidewalk, that's the public way, but not like in the middle of the street. If you get out into about the middle of Branch Street, I think it goes away. Um, you want to just circle that for us, Guy, just so we know what we're talking about, that thing right there, of which it's mocked up, you can see, you know, that just the top of it basically, and a foot or so, two feet maybe, of the corner posts. Um, uh, my reasoning here and why I think I'm comfortable with this or okay with it, I should say, is, can we go back to the, the, uh, elevation guy of the, from, from Branch Street? Yeah, so, so, um, uh, so those windows behind or doors or whatever they are, are existing?
Um, we're replacing them, but you can't see them.
Oh, right, because, sorry, now could you go back to the, uh, uh, the elevation from the, from the, yeah, the side?
The section, yeah.
Because, because, uh,
They're, they're so far back that
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, none of that's visible.
Right, this is, it, it, it's a huge house, so this may not do it justice, that the length of that pergola is how long from the
Of fifteen feet.
Yeah, so that, so those windows that you would see in that elevation from Branch Street are fifteen feet back from the edge. And so you can't really see those. Maybe you see the top of them, but, you know, a- anyway, they're not, uh, anything, I think, particularly. Um, they're not important distinguishing architectural characteristics of this facade, and they're not being altered by this in any way. The pergola just sits on top of that. Maybe it's mounted to hold it in place, but it's, it's, you're not really changing the facade, right?
Yeah, it actually doesn't affect it, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. Um, but, uh, Sandy, Arian, what do you think? Pergola wise?
Doesn't bother me that much.
Yeah, I mean, it, the, the whole point is that if we can't see it.
We're on jurisdiction, but
Yeah, you know, if we can't see it, then it's out of our purview, but, um,
Yeah, you, you, you can see a bit of it from a, from a short stretch of Branch Street, but just the top of it.
I mean,
And I would, Guy, what's it, what color is it going to be? What's the finish?
Yeah, I would paint it the same color as the trim on the house.
Which is
An off-white, like a creamy
Okay, okay, right, okay, so you'll, you'll, you'll notice it, but Okay, right, okay, so you'll 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 notice it, but
Yeah, but you're but you're right, you can only see it from the opposite side sidewalk. As soon as you step off the curb onto the street, it disappears. And then it's only from two very small spots. Where where it does become visible, so it's
Yeah, because you've got buildings on either side that are uh that are taller at the uh at the sidewalk of of brand street that obscure it once you walk past. Um, okay. So Arian, are you okay on that basis with it?
I'm I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it.
Okay, um windows rear rail, uh other windows replacement, um I think that is it. Um yeah, let me just check Rochelle's handy list here again. Um, oh, okay, uh, yeah, sorry, the one other thing which I do think we need to uh get some consensus on is the introduction of these two new windows at the top of the um on the right of that copper clad um mansard, right? So those two windows on the right at the top there are not there now. And they're proposing to put them in. You will see them from brand street. Again, not all of brand street, because there's other buildings in the way, but when you walk up behind the house, you'll see them clearly. Um again, just to quickly recap, I think allowing these would be consistent with other new windows we've allowed on a very limited basis, under very uh you know, specific uh exceptional circumstances. Um it's not a primary facade, it's not uh changing the sort of story of the architectural understanding of the history of the building and so forth. Um it's not a particularly historically significant part of the building. This part of the building is not a character defining feature, it's a later, albeit perhaps still ancient, but later addition uh to the building and so forth. So on that basis, consistent with our prior record of decision on similar circumstances where we have made a very limited exception, I think I'm okay with them.
Now, the only thing is, and you know, I bring this up all the time. Is this really gonna be a limited exception because we're doing it more and more? So pretty soon, pretty soon it's not going to be a limited exception, it's going to be the rule.
Well, I I mean respectfully, I I think we 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 have within our power to decide on a case by case basis whether we make an exception or not. And um you know, it may be the case um that we it 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 so happens that we've had uh a few applications lately where this I think on the whole unusual circumstance um has come up, right? And so uh recalling, for example, um that um we've also denied new window openings um using the same logic, uh I mentioned forty-six beacon, a very large project where we approved a few uh on the back, this is the back as well, in an unremarkable not character defining portion of the facade in a way that doesn't really change um our understanding of the the historicity of the building. Um no one will be confused when they uh look at the back of forty-six beacon, that it's not a Victorian addition, because it will still read very clearly as a Victorian addition and so forth. So we have made a few, you're right.
Okay.
But we've made them under very strict, and I think very internally consistent set of circumstances, that as it happens on those individual cases um we thought, you know, warranted the exception. So I don't, and and again, this doesn't bind us to doing anything different doing doing the same thing in the future. We still can take it one at a time. I think what's most important is that we um you know, have a a reasonable defensible, consistent record of decision. I think this is consistent with what we've done before, which was a limited exception in a very sp- specific set of circumstances that I think arguably happens to also be the case here.
I mean, you you make a very good argument. I'm just you know, I'm always gonna sign the alarm about, let's just make sure that we're paying attention to that.
And 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 I invite you to keep doing that every time.
Agree with you that, again, it is newer to the building. It's it's not an original section. It makes sense. It does, it makes sense. Um I'm a little sensitive about the fact that even though it's newer to the building, at this point, it's still an old part. And that's the thing that challenges me a little bit, because it's like uh there's some history there, but it's not, again, you're you're correct, it you still know it's a Victorian.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where I'm coming from that. And and okay, so it's not, they're making it symmetrical, which I think is fine for for from from my eye, anyway. Uh it would be one thing if there was some really unusual uh and and seemingly sort of character defining feature of the windows in this part of the building. And we think of like the Sunflower House, for example, which has this kind of wonderful, really eclectic, weird mix of all kinds of different windows, of different shapes and sizes and different, you know, numbers of panes and so forth. And there, you know, that's kind of on purpose. We know that that's from the history of the building, from the style of the building, from, you know, it's the sort of arts and crafts style building where the eclecticism was inherent to the design. And and in that case, I think we we'd be really reluctant uh to interrupt that deliberate eclecticism where the windows don't line up, and there's different numbers of them on different levels and all this. That's not really what we're talking about here. It's just for some weird reason, there's no window there. Um and uh maybe that's a practical reason that has to do much more with what's going on on the inside of the building when they built this this mansard addition, we don't know. I, you know, um but uh I don't think there's anything about it that says this is an important part of the architecture, and we're gonna misunderstand this building if it has windows there instead of copper.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, well, thank you. And and in light of that, uh anything else you think we need to discuss? Before we make a motion here. So I think okay, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna going once for the discussion, or twice, okay, I'm gonna make a motion that the application be denied with respect to the front proposed front garden, denied with respect to the elevator headhouse and approved in all other respects as submitted.
I second that.
Okay, Nick, have I forgotten anything that should be called out specifically?
No, I think you covered everything, Mark.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh we will vote. Uh Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for your patience here, Guy. I know it's a little bit a long evening, but we appreciate it. Maybe not the outcome you were entirely hoping for. Uh but as usual, get a letter from Nick, and of course, you can follow up with him directly. Uh uh anything further?
No problem, and thank you for the very thoughtful and considerate discussion and and decision. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, um let's see, I think that's it for design review.
Yep.
So we uh should be administrative?
Yes.
Uh any comments, questions, or recusals on the administrative? Is that where we are, Nick? Uh yes, uh on the administrative items?
Yeah.
You can see a lot of that. There's a there's a whole bunch of stuff on fifty-six beacon, which we're just talking about, which is thankfully gonna be handled by Nick. Okay, uh hearing no questions, comments, um any, do we hear a motion to approve administrative review items?
We have to go to the public.
Oh, yes, which, you know, I think for the hundredth time, I would not forget that, and yet I do.
That that's why I'm your your co-chair, we have ice cream there.
Thanks very much, appreciate it. Uh, does anyone want to be heard on the administrative review items? Going once, public comment, going twice. Speak now, forever hold your peace. Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion for approval of the administrative review items?
I have motion to approve the administrative items.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner uh Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, administrative review items are approved. Thank you very much. And I think we're now at ratification of public hearing minutes. Uh any questions, comments, revisions, edits on the January sixteen twenty twenty-five public hearing minutes?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the meeting public hearing minutes of January sixteen twenty twenty-five public hearing?
I move.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, we'll vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Meeting minutes are approved. Uh Nick, staff updates.
Okay, um I'll make it a very quick uh today, so just uh two uh quick updates in terms of what's going on with the department. So um we're welcoming our new deputy director, Elizabeth Sherba. Um uh Elizabeth is going to be our de- deputy director. She is coming from the Commonwealth MHC. So she'll be a great asset to our team, and she'll be overseeing the Boston Landmarks Commission in all future landmarks. Um so she's starting uh at the beginning of March.
And that's deputy director of Office of Historic Preservation?
Deputy Director of the Office of Historic Preservation, correct. So she'll report to Kathy Cottaridis uh who reports to Brian Swett, who's our chief.
Very good, right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um and then attendance policy, I just wanted to remind everybody, um everybody in this room is very good at this, so I don't really need to uh remind you, but just to put it on record here that um if you're not going to make it to the hearing as members, please just let me know as soon as possible so that I can um ask that your alternate attend in your place. Um similarly, if you are um have to recuse yourself from any of the projects on the agenda, please let me know to make sure that we still have a quorum. So um so that is it. And um that's all I had for staff updates.
Great, great photo, too.
Yeah.
Tradition of skiing on Beacon Hill.
Yeah.
Very good, okay, uh I think there being no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Uh do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
All right, everybody.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Great night.
Have a good one, Joe.
Bye.